Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.htm to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor felony and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for El Paso County Commissioners or El Paso County, Texas. Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy. In 2015, the county of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast, the number two, coast, r x dot com. Happy savings.
Did you know the county of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Card Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or a current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information. Did you know that the county of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Ryan, will you take the light on? It keeps me a little bit less inappropriate. The switch? This one?
Yeah.
It reminds me of behave.
Good morning. Today is Thursday, February 22, 2018. Commissioners Court is meeting in special open session.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for being here. We have a packed house for a Thursday meeting, but we appreciate everybody being here. We'll go ahead and start with item number...
Number two. Item number two from the regular agenda, receive a court meeting report from Art Jacob Sintron, President and Chief Executive Officer of the El Paso County Hospital District, and take appropriate action.
So the commissioner, what we're going to do first is go with El Paso Children's.
That was close.
Good morning. Good to see you all.
Well, you have in your packet the financial report for El Paso Children's. Through the first three months of this year, we lost $3.8 million, but if you'll allow me, I'd like to start with some positive comments and then tell you the negatives and then what we're doing to address those negatives.
And then before you start, if you could state your name further.
I am Stephen Andrew Reible, the Chief Financial Officer for El Paso Children's.
And is there an accompanying presentation to this, or just what we have in the packet?
Just what you have in the packet.
Starting with the positives, admissions at the hospital are up 18% over the same quarter a year ago. 18% increase in inpatient admission. Emergency room visits are up 21% over the same period a year ago. Outpatient visits are up slightly from a year ago. Surgical cases are up 3% over the same period as a year ago. Our average length of stay has fallen by 19% over the same period last year, which is good for our patients, it's good for their families, and it's good for the insurance companies, but detrimental to our financial performance based upon some of our insurance contracts. Productivity has been improved by 10% over the same period a year ago. By some measures, our productivity's improved by 20%. We're projecting an 8% reduction in our supply costs over the same period a year ago based on increased volumes. So increase in volume but a decrease in supply expense by 8%. We're actively engaged with Texas Tech to restore the contract we have with them. It results in a better balance of our academic mission with the financial needs of the organization. We've restructured our agreement with our third-party billing company, which should reduce the fees paid by approximately 20%. But with the organization losing 3.8 million this first quarter, obviously, there's some negatives as well. We continue to operate the hospital under Medicaid managed care payment contracts, many of which were signed in 2012 and 2013. In some cases, the rates paid are a fraction of the traditional Texas Medicaid payment rates. And in every case, the payment rates that have been paid to the hospital are below market rates paid to other Texas Children's Hospitals. That's simply not sustainable. When we look at our payer mix, our percentage of patients who are paid under a Medicaid MCO contract has grown from 51% of our business to 58% of our business, excuse me, 59% of our business, and that's through January. That 8% shift from traditional Medicaid to Medicaid MCO business should have resulted in an increase in revenue to the hospital had we been paid market rates, but instead has resulted in a continued decline in our revenues due to poor payer contracts. Despite the increase in volume, to which I previously referred, our net patient revenue has fallen 6.1% quarter over quarter, which is a little over a million dollars. Medicaid supplemental revenue funding designed to compensate hospitals for the Medicaid shortfall has been cut. We reported $2.6 million in Medicaid waiver monies this quarter, 2.6 million, as compared to 3.7 million the same period last year. That's a cut of 31%. And there are currently discussions underway at the state level to cut yet another $5 million in uncompensated care funding to El Paso Children's Hospital. And that's, those are procedural and policy-type decisions that are going to be impacting negatively virtually every children's hospital in the state. So it's not that El Paso Children's is being singled out. So what are we doing to address the negatives? We continue to meet daily to identify and address cost reduction opportunities with senior leadership meetings, evaluating over 20 opportunities. We are actively working on organizational improvements for department structure, performance matrices, discipline, and consistency to rise to the next level of performance. We're evaluating physician staffing levels to better balance the allocation of resources between specialties. And this will result in both staffing reductions as well as increases, along with the change in the support staffing mix to drive higher patient volume and better service to the public we serve. We are seeking revenue enhancements with our insurance contracts, certainly. And these are the core elements of the restructuring plan to improve cash flow. So to get a little, few more specifics, in terms of our managed Medicaid contracts, to which I previously referred, we sent termination letters to all of our Medicaid MCOs for the purpose of renegotiating those contracts. Discussions have actively started with our largest Medicaid MCO, and that contract, when negotiated, assuming we get market rates, will represent a significant portion of our total contracting opportunity. So that negotiation is going to be absolutely critical to us. It will help to replace, oh, to me, it would help to place political pressure on superior paid market rates in the new contract. We've hired a consulting firm, a national consulting firm, to assist with the superior contract negotiations. They're a national firm with extensive experience working on both the health plan side as well as the provider side, so as to result in a fair contract for both parties. Their tools and expertise will also assist with the negotiation and pricing of the other Medicaid MCO contracts. With regards to Texas Tech, the contract terms will be changed to improve accountability and consistency for all physician specialty services. Some of the significant discussions to reduce the overall cost of the contract include development of performance matrix for physician productivity, incentive payments for improved revenue and collections, insurance contract review to maximize professional fees, improved billing and collections, improved patient access and scheduling, and the development of a physician business model that balances our mission to enhance medical education in our community with the business goals of the organization. EPCH is still operating under the original physician model for hospital services and support for teaching academics in the residency program. This business model lacks a business focus and represents a high-cost structure. The residency program will be reduced to nine residents per year from 15 residents per year. Texas Tech has eliminated three students, and EPCH has done the same, resulting in that reduction. UMC shared services and departmental synergies. Several departmental opportunities have been identified. Joint department meetings are occurring to identify best practices and build relationships. Compliance, case management, revenue cycling, accounting are just four of the departments actively integrating. The EPCH pharmacy and lab are working together with UMC departments to standardize procedures and establish best practices. Cost savings can be realized, but will also shift some of the costs to UMC ASA contract to expand services. One of the additional benefits associated with the synergies is the operational benefit gained by access to a larger pool of skilled resources at departmental level. The small size of Children's Hospital creates cross-training challenges resulting in a sudden loss of technical expertise. The UMC relationship will help buffer technical knowledge gaps. We're also working to develop or grow our commercial population. However, we've been experiencing declines in our commercial population over the last few years. Several factors have contributed to this trend relating to the EPCH bankruptcy and a lack of marketing to penetrate the market. Also, competitive hospitals have created strong birthing programs, along with good NICU coverage. This has negatively impacted both EPCH and UMC. Commercial payers are relatively low in volume, but they're an important part of our cash flow and our margins. We're out meeting with physicians in the community on a regular basis. However, referral patterns are difficult to change, so this is going to take some time to develop. Initial physician and provider comments have always been positive on quality of care, but poor on communications on patient status and scheduling of patients. Since operational changes and communication plans were implemented, we're receiving positive comments on both direct admissions and the quality of communications post discharge. EPCH needs the support of the citizens of El Paso County with commercial insurance. We provide excellent care and it supports the entire community healthcare system. We have some specific opportunities that have been identified as it relates to our pharmacy, so we, those analyses are continuing to address the high cost of drugs and their utilization. This will also serve to support the insurance contract negotiation to control costs and provide adequate reimbursement. We're also addressing our formularies to control use as well as limit utilization of drugs that are outside of the formulary. In terms of staffing, I mentioned our productivity's improved mildly. The hospital's reduced staff by 5.7% over the past year, quarter over quarter. And at the same time, our hospital volumes have increased 18% and inpatient emissions at 21% in our ED. So productivity's improved significantly, as I stated before. Nonetheless, we're evaluating alternative plans in the event emergency cost reductions are needed. Staffing mix, staffing ratios, and overtime are some of the core opportunities. Overtimes being monitored on a daily basis. Developing flex scheduling to adjust department staffing based upon volumes is underway. And some specialty staffings' salaries are below market rates, which have increased turnover and hiring challenges. Some labor savings may be absorbed by market compensation adjustments on a go-forward basis. We will know over the next two months whether there's support by the payer community to support the underserved and the underprivileged children of El Paso, or whether they would rather return to the days prior to 2012, when children with severe disabilities and illnesses had to travel long distances with their families to receive specialized care. We think that would be tragic, and we'd like your support to ensure that that doesn't happen.
So, go ahead. I was going to say, let me tie it in just a bit with the financials that you have in front of you. So if you have the packet, if you could please go to page 15. Andy jumped into the action plans that we have in place to kind of monitor all the line items and what we're doing actively. And so if you're on that page already, right about, this is your income statement. So right about the lower half, there's the net income line. So as on the right-hand side, the year-to-date value is about 3.776, a loss. This was compared to a budget of 822. So you can see, obviously, from my perspective, that we've misbudgeted at this point by about $3 million, right? And the bulk of that is to the point that Andy spoke to, up in the net patient revenue line, up on the top of this income statement, you can see that the net patient revenue is about 17.8 versus a budget of 20. So the difference versus budget is 3 million in that line alone. This is what he's speaking to as it relates to what we're doing with the payers and working with them to modify those contracts. So that is our biggest target. If you go to the operating expenses, right below that, you see that the cost structure budget for the three months versus the where we're at for the three months on actuals on the operating expenses, we're very similar on cost structure. But the greatest opportunity within that then lies in the physician piece, which is what he also spoke to. What we're doing is it relates with tech and other payers to monitor the usage of locums in the house and make sure that we're effective with that process.
I have a question. The contracts that you were negotiating, how soon will they go into effect? And what kind of change will that bring to the deal?
So the largest one that we're working on right now is the superior contract. By March 21st, we should have something in place. We've met with them on a couple of times already, and so we have another time set up to continue the negotiations with them. Again, what we've been able to see is that as we've increased our volumes, which is good, we've been able to decrease the length of stay, which is appropriate. That's what you want to do within your facility. But what's happening is that we're not seeing that revenue come back. It's very clear to us that our managed care contracts are way below market rate, and that is key for us to make sure that we get those back in line. All the other children's hospitals, as we've networked with them, we clearly see that we are below in terms of our rates. So renegotiating them, making sure that they're fair contracts, and that the hospital is paid for the services that it provides is very key for us at this point.
So what timelines do you think you'll have of those contracts?
By the end of April, we should have all the contracts negotiated out.
Good idea. Thanks.
So you would think from a first quarter, we have a 4 million loss, and we multiply that, obviously, by four, you would think 12 million loss. Again, all these efforts that we're putting in there are taking time, but the biggest But the biggest impact is going to be derived from the managed care insurance contracts. So we're very hopeful and positive that the transition to those new contracts is going to change this picture on the last two quarters of this fiscal year as well as the Texas Tech agreement.
When will the Texas Tech agreement be?
Our goal is to have that completed at the end of this month. And so the proposal's been given from our side over to Texas Tech. So they're in the process of reviewing that.
I've got a question. You mentioned the pharmacy and lab. You're shifting cost to UMC. What does that mean?
I don't believe we're shifting cost from UMC. We're looking at the procedures that we use in both organizations and adopting best practices. But we're also recognizing that we have opportunities to adhere to a formulary in much the same way that other organizations have done simply to control costs, which is something that our payers are desiring to do as well.
So what you actually said was that you are in the process of shifting cost to UMC. That's not the case?
No, not with respect to the lab and pharmacy, no.
No. But Commissioner?
Sorry. If I could add, there is a administrative services agreement that exists between UMC and Children's Hospital. And so as we begin to try to resize and look for ways that we could minimize costs, any UMC labor that would be provided to childrens in part of this consolidation would be paid by Children's back to us.
But Commissioner, we're working very closely. I'm the district controller on the UMC side and as we meet daily, we're looking at opportunities on both sides. As Andy already pointed out, the bulk of the tenure of people and knowledge and the depth is sitting on the UMC side. So we're sharing ideas. We're bringing the teams from both sides together to analyze the structure on both and say what works best. And then we're making adjustments as we go along. This has already happened for multiple departments as well as for the OR and the pharmacy. So this continues as we go forward. So a lot of good opportunity for both organizations.
And although volumes have increased, I know that you have been doing quite a bit to reach out to private doctors locally to have them change their referral pattern. How is that, are you fairly confident that over the next year you'll see some significant change or at least some change?
Yes, Judge. We're actually seeing some improvements with that as we've been meeting with the community pediatricians and restoring those relationships. They have begun to send us some patients and we very much appreciate that. I think also too is that getting out the message of all the services that are provided at this dedicated children's hospital is very key to the city. And I think that as I've found in meeting with some of the pediatricians, not everybody understands the depth of services that are provided at this hospital. So again, getting the word out to them, connecting them colleague to colleague, making sure that they understand that we're the only hospital that has a 24/7 intensivist onsite for PICU coverage. We've got a Level 4 NICU. The depth of services is very good at this hospital. So again, it's just getting the word out with them so that they understand and they'll want to refer their patients to us.
And how's the collaboration going between both entities, UMC and the Children's Hospital and amongst the board and staff that is now working to evaluate all the numbers and really now having the tangible data to be able to make these significant changes? How is that relationship?
The relationship is very good, I would say. Both boards are working extremely well together. Both are very engaged. We report to both boards and every single month to show them what we're doing in terms of our financials and the operational efficiencies. The teams that we've brought together, like Letty was talking about, have really welcomed the teams working together. They're sharing best practices on both sides and that's what's needed. I mean, we really are two hospitals, but yet we can share best practices. And so yes, the teams have been working well together.
Letty, is probably more for you on page 14. And I just need to understand what that is. Under capital assets and goodwill, what is that? Towards the bottom, under capital assets?
So when the organization came out of bankruptcy, there was an assessment of evaluation of the organization. And when that happened, you know, with the auditors and expertise that they have, they identified that there was a value, if you will, to the net assets of the organization. And that valuation difference started being recorded when they came out of bankruptcy and that was the $4.5 million.
So that is, there was, I guess, different valuations? And this is more towards the center? I still don't understand that.
So they look at the value of the name, the value of the organization overall that it brings to the community. And so they do an assessment with a third party that typically is involved in valuation of the business. And they say this is what it's worth at that point in time. And they can take into consideration that the financial picture is long-term viability and say this is what we determined at that point in time. And every year that will be critically analyzed by the auditors again as the performance of the organization continues.
So that 4.5 is added value or?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So it's your hope that with all the measures you're putting in place now with reaching out to the private physicians, renegotiating the contracts, creating a leaner, meaner machine, that in the next two quarters we could see potentially a change in this $3 million that we're seeing now?
Absolutely, absolutely. I think the only thing that's the unknown at this point, as Andy said, is that all of the children's hospitals and we're one of those small or one of those few within Texas that we participate at the state level with the Children's Hospital Association of Texas. And there's a lot of talk about the uncompensated care and how that's going to be funded. Nothing has been decided upon in that regard. But we're making sure that we have a clear voice there and making sure that from a political standpoint that they understand that we need to continue with funding of uncompensated care for children throughout all of Texas. So we're working closely with those hospitals.
And a Level, I'm sorry, and a Level 4 NICU is good?
A Level 4 NICU is the highest level that you can get, absolutely. It means that you have specialized care. You have neonatologists onsite 24/7. I think what's very different with our facility also is that we have a transport team that is onsite, ready to take off within 10 minutes. So it's delivering a higher level of care, yes.
So that's ready to pick up a child coming by?
Absolutely. You call us and our team's moving out within 10 minutes.
That's good to hear.
Yes.
Commissioners, any other questions? I appreciate the fact that you have been meeting with all of us quite regularly and appreciate this update. I know that it's going to take some time for us. I think that there's no doubt in anybody's mind that there's a need for a children's hospital in our community. I know that we've seen some difficulty over the last several years. But I think that we now have the leadership team in place, the collaboration in place, and a better understanding of what really exists within children's for us, for you all, to begin to start steering it in the right direction. And so I appreciate all that you're doing and keeping us informed and keeping the community informed. Is there anything that you think we can be doing to help you all in the work that you're doing behind the scenes to make sure that we have a fantastic children's hospital?
No, I think probably just the biggest thing is to keep your eye out if we need to call on you with the contract negotiations. That's probably the most key thing at this point. And again, like Andy said, we need to be at market rates. This hospital has not been at the market rates and that's been very detrimental for our facility. And so as we renegotiate those, then we may need to call on you all to assist with that.
You mentioned that those were negotiated back in 2012, 2013?
Some of them back 2012, 2013.
Why would they be below market rate?
You know what, we've talked about this, Judge, and I don't have a clear answer for you. I wasn't there at that time. I don't know what the thought process was. A lot of things change in healthcare. It's very dynamic. And so I don't know if something else was occurring with the children's facilities at that point in time as to why it was negotiated that way. It's clearly not put us in a position for us to be even at the breakeven level. But I'm confident that as we renegotiate these, that they're going to be looking very different.
We appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Can you send us a copy of that narrative that you read?
Sure, absolutely we can. Yeah, because you do those bullet points. Absolutely.
Did they even mention the donations you've been getting, which to me is always an indicator of public support of your?
You know what, that's true. We've had a number of great individuals within the community who continue to support and it's really going to help us to grow an endowment. Children's hospitals do not exist without a strong endowment, quite frankly. And so Southwest University, the work that Walmart and Sam's Club has done, all of these different organizations have been phenomenal with supporting it. Again, I've told people that we're like a best-kept secret and we shouldn't be. We should be getting the word out about the services that are offered and we need to just improve our operations, which we're working on and we're starting to see some really good things with. But yeah, the support of the community's been very wonderful to have.
If I can say something, before you leave, as we spoke about a couple of weeks ago, that children's is also present in a couple or more of the clinics. And I think the public doesn't realize that if there's a care to be given to a child in different areas of their illness, that they can also go to one of the clinics for care.
Absolutely. You know, UMC has some great clinics. We've been working closely with them. There is full coverage for what I call the full continuum of care for a population. So babies, children can go into those clinics and receive care by pediatricians and then all the way to our geriatric population. What's nice about the clinics is that they're like a one-stop shop. They have full-blown pharmacies. They have rehab. They have imaging services, so a laboratory. So these are the things that you want. It's very convenient for families to get treated, especially when you don't feel well. One-stop shop, get what you need and then you're able to go home and to heal.
And again, it goes into what you said a while ago. It's a secret that not too many of our taxpayers know.
Yes, yes. So again, we're working closely with UMC and how do we really get that message out? We've got some different marketing efforts that we're doing, but a lot of it is connecting with our physicians as well as different organizations who have large populations of staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So thank you. My name is Jacob Seem, president and CEO of the El Paso County Hospital District. Michael Nunez is our district CFO. And again, Letty Flores, you could always tell who the smart one is in the group because she's with both groups. So, you know, she knows it. I think everybody else knows it, but we have a team. Before we go over our quarterly reviews, a few things of note. The team has been working really hard with the state and the CMS in terms of trying to get the waiver approved. As I had mentioned before, the waiver was renewed for five years effective this year, though it is a little bit misleading. Years one and two will continue at the full rate of reimbursement. Years three and four will begin to decline and then year five it goes to zero. In the meantime, the state has been working with a lot of the safety net hospitals to see how those funds are reduced. Could other funds be redirected to other programs such as increasing the amount of GME reimbursement for residents that we have covering in teaching hospitals? Or another program that shows great promise is one that's actually being piloted now in El Paso and San Antonio known as JIRA, or the Uniform Hospital Rate Improvement Program, which allows managed care organizations to increase the rates, to increase reimbursements to them and to ourselves, and is greatly supported by CMS at the federal level. Additionally, recently we were notified that UMC has been designated in the Word of the Accreditation for a Conference of Stroke Centers. This is the highest level you can get in the country. We will be the first in all of New Mexico and the first in El Paso. It requires a lot of energy and effort and skills physicians and team to be able to offer 24/7. Part of this is the fact that we have an interventional lab that allows our neuro-interventional physicians, we've got three of them, that can work on addressing a stroke case. For example, if you have a bleed or if you have a blockage. We're, as you know, have been approved to build a second lab to be able to do that. We also recently had a ribbon cutting for our neuro ICU, which is a 10-bed unit. Two of those beds are dedicated for deep brain sedation for things such as epilepsy. And we're going to be opening a nine-bed stroke unit along with that to be able to provide adequate care and really enhanced care for the patients that come into our hospital that may be suffering from a stroke. So there's a lot of activity going on. We're really proud of that. As Cindy had mentioned previously, the teams are working well together in terms of trying to find ways through our combining efforts to make sure we maximize our effort. And obviously with the clear intent that this coming year, we're not intending to request a tax increase. We also have as a partner, Texas Tech School of Medicine, and our relationship with them has been good. They continue to look for ways to help us in terms of areas where we can reduce costs but also look at services that we're not offering right now in El Paso that are needed and for a way for us to be able to provide additional services for our community. So having said all that, then I'll pass it over to Michael and Letty to go over our first quarter. I will tell you some of the things they're going to mention is our volumes are up. We're really proud of that. Patient revenue is up to budget 5%, up to prior year 18%. And overall, operating revenues are up 2% to budget and 4% to prior year. And this is a reflection of not only increased volume, but the quality of care. We're beginning to see people that had choices of vertigo choosing to come to UMC. Our clinic volumes are doing well. As Cindy had mentioned earlier, these are medical homes that provide care at all levels. Soon they'll be providing specialty care such as orthopedics and OB. But currently we offer pediatrics. We offer adult, soon oral, mat, or facial coverage. So there's a number of things that these clinics will be able to offer on a regular basis. As you know, you've also approved us building a freestanding ED on the Joe Battle Clinic site and in Northeast. And these will be 24/7 operations that'll offer additional care, all hours, day and night, seven days a week for the population we care for. And, you know, it'll serve sort of as not only a freestanding ED but also an enhanced urgent care center for our population. So with that, and we're not seeing any more thunder, I'll pass it to Michael.
I was saying Jacob's don't love thunder. I have nothing else to say. But Jacob did hit it upon, you know, some key points. And I'll talk about UMC and El Paso Health and the UMC Foundation. But strong revenues for the quarter. We do have some challenges in terms of expense control. And that's, you know, mainly on the salary side. So, you know, despite of the revenue growth, unfortunately on the labor side, our labor expenses grew faster or at a faster rate than our volume growth. Another area that we have challenges on is on contract labor. Normally we've experienced around 15 to 20 FTEs in contract labor, but because of the additional volume growth, we're up to almost 55 to 60 FTEs in contract labor, which is very, very expensive. And then the third area is in the area of our supplies. We continue to work on our supply contract metrics. And what I mean by that is that when we're trying, when we're purchasing supplies, and I'll just call it a widget, when we're able to consolidate purchases through one or two vendors, we're able to take advantage of better contract tier pricing as opposed to maybe having four or five vendors. So that's another area that we are really looking at, you know, trying to consolidate some of these purchases. In the second tab, there's this 35-page report. There's about five pages that I'm relating. Let's hit on page one. We look at the campus-wide financial report and this includes UMC, El Paso Health, Foundation, and Children's for the quarter, year-to-date. You see that we have a change in net position of about a negative $9 million. You know, right off the bat, you said, you know, that's not very good. But when you look at, when you, once you back out the non-cash expenses of depreciation and amortization, we're virtually at a breakeven for the quarter. Now, that's not a, you know, that's not a road that you want to continue because you want to have positive margins. So you have money, you know, available for, you know, for capital reimbursement, you know, property purchases, et cetera. So that's a, you know, so these from a stampede entity-wide, we are, campus-wide, we are at a breakeven budget for the first quarter. On page two, now this really now talks about UMC, El Paso Health, and the Foundation. In the middle of the section, you'll see the year-to-date change in net position for the three entities. And that's about a $6.2 million decrease in net position. However, once you back out the non-cash depreciation and amortization expense, those three entities- However, once you back out the non-cash depreciation and amortization expense, those three entities have, do have a positive cash flow of about $3 million. So that's a, you know, so that's one area which I wanted to emphasize. The next couple of pages I want to go through, really begin on page 11. The first 10 pages talks about the operations for the month, but I want to talk about the operations for the quarter. As Jacob was talking about, on our admissions, inpatient admissions and outpatient visits have been very good. When you look at admissions, we're about 6% over budget, 12% over last year. Our average daily census, last year we were 172 for the quarter. This year we're at 197. So very, very busy on the inpatient side. Surgeries are both positive to budget and to prior year, as are endoscopy procedures, 16 and 18% respectively. The one area that we do continue to have challenges are in the aerial burst from a standpoint. We're down 16% to budget, about 14% to prior year. Now, we are, we are collecting data, at least to see citywide, to see what, you know, so we're going back about the last five years. And the early indications do show that citywide bursts are down, you know, if you turn it back to five years ago, six years ago. And our market share probably has changed maybe by about 1%. So, you know, so that's an area, I mean, that we are looking at from a standpoint, trying to at least maintain the market share that we've always had. If not, can we increase that, you know, with that market share in burst? You'll see outpatient visits as a whole, 2% above budget. We're up 12% over last year. And the one item I do want to point out is on the primary care clinics. Although we're down 5% to budget because the, we did have a slower October, November, primary care clinics visits, you'll see that compared to previous year, we're up about 23%. Now, we were talking about January, those, you know, those numbers really did go up because once a flu season hit, we were very, very busy in the, in the primary care clinics. Next page, I want to talk through is on page 15. This is where we start talking, or page 11, which is
Can I ask you a quick question, sorry, before you move on?
Yes.
In terms of the primary care clinics, prior to the clinics, I'm assuming that folks would have to seek their health care if they had a flu, for example, in some other means. Did we see that through like ER? And now we're seeing that funnel into the clinics? We see more people utilizing the clinics or?
We're seeing more people utilize the clinics. For example, El Paso Health, when they gave their quarterly report, they stated that the number of flu cases, for example, for January incurred a million dollars in tamiflu costs. But that for, as it relates to UMC, and they cover patients go to different healthcare systems, that the majority of those patients did not come through our ER. They mainly went through the medical homes, which is what we want. We want them to go to low-cost value. And so with the hours that we have, the locations we have in our 10 clinics, we were able to provide that care and address that issue with, related to flu at our clinic sites. So not only was it closer to the families that live in those areas, but it also alleviated what would normally have been an overcrowded ED. So it really helped in terms of being able to manage these patients that had flu at a lower cost way, closer to home, and alleviating some of that pressure that we would have normally felt back in our ED.
So the next, on page 13, here's where we start talking about the operating revenues. You'll see that we have the information there for the quarter ending December compared to budget and then also compared to the previous year. Overall, you look at operating revenues, we're up about 2% over budget, about 4% over the prior year, the same period. Now, when you look at patient service revenue, which is related to our volumes, we're about $3 million over, a positive on patient service revenue. We're almost $8 million, you know, over compared to last year. Premium revenue, which is El Paso Health, 1% over budget, 7% decrease from last year, but that's primarily related to the rate capitation decreases that was passed on from HHSC to El Paso Health for this year. Most of the other areas are very close to budget and to prior year. Medicaid supplemental, which covers our disproportionate share dollars, uncompensated care, DISRIP, and then as well as DISH, that's about $21 million, which is very, very close to budget. Our contract revenue is about $4.8 million, very close to budget, $5.2 million last year. The main reason for the decrease here is that this is our contract revenue that we have with El Paso Children's. There's certain medical, medical equipment and information technology, equipment leases that actually went down because now that they become, a lot of the equipment that was originally purchased back in 2011 has now become fully depreciated. So those items fell off the elite schedule. So overall, you'll see that our operating revenues, again, $130 million compared to budget, $128. And last year was about $125. So the volumes and the revenues have been, have been very good for the first quarter. Turn two pages to page 15. This is talking about the operating expenses. Now here, right off the bat, when you look at the bottom line on the operating expenses, you'll see that we're over budget by about 6%. When, two pages before, you saw that our operating revenues were over budget by 2. Unfortunately, our operating expenses are over budget by 6. And earlier, as I alluded to, these are the three main areas, salaries and employee benefits. We're up about $3.8 million compared to budget. Our supplies and pharmaceutical expenses is up about $2.5 million. And then when you look at purchase services, up about $2.1. The majority of that is related to the contract labor that I alluded to earlier in terms of some of the backfill that we've had to do because of open positions. So those are the areas that we definitely do have, you know, challenges. And as I alluded to, our overtime hours are about 4.1% for the quarter, which represents about 113 FTEs. So we're working to ratchet that down now, you know, for the remaining part of the year. And then as well as our contract labor, which I mentioned, you know, previously, we averaged about 20 contract labor FTEs, but right now we're up to about, about 55. One other area on page 18, what we talked about are non-operating revenues. And non-operating revenues, this primarily consists of our property tax revenues and our bond interest expense. You'll see that our property taxes compared to budget, right, you know, right at budget with $26 million. It is up 10%, or about $3 million from the previous year, but that's related to the current tax increase that went into effect October 1.
It's 26 or 23?
Right. It's 26 for the quarter. And then last year was about 23 million.
Okay.
And that's related to the tax increase that went into effect October 1. So you'll see overall, our non-operating revenues were right at budget, 23 million. That compared to last year was about, was about $21 million.
Mike, can I add on to that? Not only is it the change in tax rate, but it's also the change in value. We get just under $800 million in taxable value. So that's dragging that number as well.
That is correct. Thank you, Wally. And the last comment I want to make is on page 19, where we always measure, how are we doing on cash, our cash levels, the unrestricted cash and investments outside of the bond monies. We're right at $70 million, which represents about 40 days' cash on hand. This does exceed right now, what we had, our budgeted cash levels to be of about $66 million. So we're up above our cash level projections by about $3.4 million right now. So in a nutshell, those are the highlights for UMC, El Paso Health, and the Foundation in terms of the first quarter. Again, revenues, very strong, expenses. We do, we do have a challenge there. We do need to work on those. And we do have a team. We are looking at that very closely in terms of that way that we can get back on budget for the remaining eight months that we have before we close out of this year in September.
When you say work on it, what, what, does that mean?
But we're looking
What exactly are you planning on doing to?
In terms of the expense side?
Yes. We're actually, she's heading up an operational efficiency team and we're working with, how can we quickly fill, you know, those positions where we have contract labor with permanent employees? So we've been doing a lot of employee fares and putting out on social media. We're looking for courses as a therapist. But the goal is to try to reduce the reliance on contract labor. We opened about 32 beds overall this year. And so hiring the additional staff to cover that has been a challenge. So we're currently working on trying to reduce the contract labor because that is a higher cost for, of labor that we want to eliminate. We're also looking at better controls for our overtime and how we approve the overtime ahead of time. There's about, you know, actually probably a 60 employee opportunity there that we could be able to better utilize. We have productivity standards set based on benchmarks for every department. And there is an opportunity there for those departments that are not at their targeted area. So those are some of the things we're looking at. As Michael had mentioned earlier, too, is looking at when we buy surgical devices or cath lab devices for the heart, is there a way that we can try to consolidate as much as we can to one vendor so that we can get better tier pricing? And so those are some examples of things that we're working on.
As you mentioned, I'm head of this operational excellence team, which is a new venue for the organization. It is composed of various members of the organization selected by the chiefs, as well as a couple of men and engineers. So they bring a new look, a new view approach to everything that we're tackling. Not only, as Jacob pointed out, are we looking at expenses, we're also looking at deep process review with perhaps even revenue enhancements as we go along. They're key, if you will, to the ED throughput issues that we kind of addressed in the past and kind of monitoring, you know, what we're doing throughout the house. So a lot is coming from that group and huge expectations to manage the expenditures as well.
For example, one of the things that we're working with Emergence Health Network is looking at providing another East Side extended observation unit. If we're able to do that, then they'll be working with El Paso PD that emergency detention order patients rather than going to hospitals, where 90% may not even need any kind of hospitalization, that they will go to these extended ops units, one on Montana and one that we'd be opening on George Teeter. In so doing, it also improves our throughput because rather than having beds or sort of, you know, being maintained, we just have sitters watching a patient while they try to get into a psych hospital, or to level out if they're over intoxicated or they need a med rebalance. It's tying up the bed and tying up the ability for us to get our patients seen through the ED. On the other hand, by doing this other option, it works a lot more effectively. I've talked to Sally Deitch at Hospitals of Providence. They're interested in being a part of this and possibly helping us open one up in the Northeast. And we're going to be reaching out to HCA to see if they're interested as well. And what it does is two things. It frees up beds in the ED for the appropriate type of patient that should be in the ED. But it provides a better level of care for those needing, not necessarily admission into a psych facility, but just simply a place where they could get some counseling, you know, located geographically in areas close to where they're at. Additionally, we're also, have already done an integration of being able to handle some patients that may need help with their medications for say depression or anxiety at our clinics. And that also increases that throughput on the behavioral side that enhances the service we provide in the community.
Jim, can you talk a little bit more about that productivity report? I think that's something you're putting out. Is that daily?
It's daily. And what it does is it measures to an established standard based on benchmarks of hospitals like ourselves as to how we, how we staffing to the volume we get. So sometimes you have a volume fluctuation. If it goes up, you may be short-staffed and it will tell us we need to get more help for that particular unit. In other cases, it might be that if the volume doesn't materialize, that we might have a lot of staff waiting for volume that isn't coming in. So how do we manage our expenses? So there's a report that comes out every day. One report comes out that identifies our operating metrics, what our volumes are in different categories by day. So we can see how we're doing to budget, you know, in a real-time, month-to-date basis. And to see where there's opportunities where, you know, we're seeing a trend that's not favorable, how do we begin to address it early? On the productivity side, it lists by departments available to our directors, how each department is doing to the productivity standard they were budgeted to. It also identifies how many hours are being spent in contract labor, which is the high-dollar labor, so that we can work on trying to minimize that. And it also addresses, you know, by employee, the overtime to see where there's opportunities to, you know, better control that. It comes out daily. They look at it daily. And it's really a tool designed to effectively manage our labor component, which is probably the most expensive part of our operating expense budget in a hospital.
Jacob, now that you mentioned the, excuse me, the labor component, you, we spoke about the 6% reduction that you're seeking from all departments. And I think this is more for the benefit of your employees that might be listening to your report because of the calls that I received in my office. There's a fear that it's going directly into a reduction in a lot of FTEs.
Right.
And we discussed that. I just wanted you to bring it forward to maybe put them at ease of the direction you're taking.
Right. And, you know, we certainly, you know, looking at, well, we missed our budget is the expense part related to staffing. And so people begin to worry, well, does that mean we're going to cut staff? We're not intending to have a reduction. What we're looking at is, you know, we have, you know, opportunities to attrition. We cycle about 50 employee openings every month. We would look at closely monitoring the specific departments that are not at target. And if they have open positions, do we freeze those? If we can provide better controls, for example, in our overtime, that's equivalent to 60 FTEs or full-time equivalent employees. If we looked at the departments that are missing target right now, that's 91 FTEs. So by managing to what we committed to manage and without a rift, we should be able to get there. It may take a couple of months to three months, but we'll get there. The plan is not to do a rift at all.
I appreciate that. And I think the last thing I have is you mentioned the ER shifting some of it into the clinics that we are going to be, you all are going to be hoping for an opening where there's an ER at the clinics, both the West Side and East Side. Do you have a timeline for that?
Well, it's Northeast and East. And the timeline, we're getting the drawings done now. Matter of fact, in the next couple of weeks, we'll see the more detailed drawings for the two locations.
Are you talking about the EOUs or?
The freestanding EDs. The freestanding EDs. And what we want to do there is, you know, per discussion yesterday, is that if typically freestanding EDs, where they make their money is they charge an ED rate for everybody going in. The beauty of it is it's open 24/7. It's got a DD physician there. It's got a CT scanner. It certainly can handle a lot. But typically, what you get in those kinds of EDs are typically low-acuity EDs. So one of the things we talked about is that if we open up these two freestanding EDs, and then eventually we'll do one on the West Side, the goal is that if you come in and it's really more of an urgent care type situation, then you'll be charged an urgent care rate, not an ED rate. If it is a true ED situation, then you'll be charged an ED rate. So the purpose of that is insurance companies do not like freestanding EDs because they, they get charged a lot. And so we're working with organizations like Aetna, that if they have their members go to our freestanding ED, hands it up and running, we'll do a price tiering that's appropriate for the kind of care we're providing so that we're not, we're not charging a high rate for an ED for something that could have been handled at an urgent care center.
And hopefully this too will alleviate some of the issues going on in your main camp.
Definitely. I mean, if you need to come in, it always seems to be that, especially with children, they never get sick during the day on a weekend. It's usually at night. We'll be able to provide that service for any of our members in those areas so that they have a closer drive, closer to home. If it's, if it's of a more serious nature, we can transfer them to our main hospital. But it's really now more and more moving the service to the consumer, to the families closer to where they live. And that's happening nationwide, but especially here with the I-10 construction, the Highway 54, it'll work a lot better in terms of having people places closer to home to be able to go to.
And just one more thing, for public information, you mentioned the designation that you have received for strokes. If you were not at that spot, if somebody had a stroke and they wanted to be seen by a facility with a rating that you now have, where would they have to go?
Well, right now, there would be nowhere to go. We're the first ones to have the conference of stroke certification. Many of the hospitals have a primary stroke certification, and that's good for a certain type of strokes. And so we're working with the Border Act, for instance, that if it's, if it's one that, you know, requires, you know, large vessel attention, that it would come directly to us. We'll also be working with EMS. We'll also be working with EMS. It is no secret. I suspect in the next few months or years, HCA and Tenet may do the same thing. And so the thing here is that how do we work together so that we can make sure we provide the right services so that anywhere in the city, if you have a situation like that, you have somewhere close to go to.
And Jacob, and getting back to the original question, where would somebody have to drive to receive that level of care in a stroke situation?
UMC.
If UMC wasn't available and they did not have that rating, you're talking about going to Phoenix, you're talking about going to San Antonio, is that correct?
Right. As far as comprehensive stroke, thank you. As far as comprehensive strokes, we're the only designated comprehensive stroke center. The closest would be Phoenix or San Antonio.
That's what I'm saying.
Thank you.
Commissioners and other questions? Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Yes, we do have, before all of you leave, one member of the public that would like to speak. I'd like to invite out Ms. Anterma Corral. Please come up. Good morning. Please come have a seat.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Anterma Corral. I worked in JUC for eight years. I'm a CNA and I love my job. First, I want to tell some things to models the workers want to know, okay? My English is not better, but I try, okay?
If you would prefer, Judge, I could translate into English if you want to speak in Spanish. That would be okay?
Okay. La mayoría de los trabajadores de JUC estamos confundidos y preocupados por los recortes que ha habido en las posiciones, en los trabajos, que han tenido un gran impacto en nosotros en el hospital. Porque muchos.
A majority of workers at UMC are confused and concerned because of the impact that they're seeing in the budget cuts in the various departments.
So ha habido muchos recortes y muchos del trabajo que hacían esas personas. So las personas que nos quedamos lo estamos haciendo. So el trabajo ha incrementado.
The work has gotten more because those people that used to be there to help do the work, they're not there right now.
Y pues los otros que se han ido han perdido sus trabajos.
And those people who have left, well, they don't have that work there.
La gente estamos preocupados por el dinero. ¿A dónde se está yendo el dinero? Este, se han recortado posiciones pero se están dando grandes bonos a los ejecutivos.
The concern is that where the monies are going, where there are positions not being filled, but bonuses being given for executives.
So nosotros esperamos que los trabajadores seamos parte de las soluciones y tenemos, tengamos voz en el presupuesto.
Our hope is that the workers become part of the solution and have a voice in the budget process for the hospital.
Muchos de los trabajadores somos dueños de casa, de los trabajadores de JUC, de negocios. Puesto y pagamos muchos taxes. Muchos de nosotros queremos saber qué se está haciendo con nuestro dinero que nosotros pagamos impuestos. Es una de las grandes preguntas. Queremos que se haga público dónde se está yendo este dinero, a quién se le están dando estos bonos y que todos los trabajadores tengamos acceso a esto.
Many of the workers at UMC are property owners, business owners, as in my case. And we know that we are contributing to the taxes. And we do have an interest in seeing where the bonuses are going.
¿Dónde se está, a quiénes se dan y que lo hagan público?
Okay, so that those are public, so that the public sees where those funds are going.
Voy a decir un ejemplo. Nos han recortado mucho las CNAs y tenemos más trabajo. Y en mi opinión y en muchas CNAs no estamos haciendo safe patient. El paciente no está safe, ni nosotros. Pero el más importante es el paciente y no está haciendo safe. Recortaron los one-to-one y los pacientes se nos están cayendo de las camas.
So the example that I'd like to give is about CNAs, where if there's not enough of us to take care of patients, this is a risk to the patient. We care about patient safety. When there's not enough of them, the risk is that a patient could fall from the bed.
En las enfermeras, se quedaron muchas sin trabajo porque les empezaron a dar muchos pacientes. So las enfermeras que salieron de nuestras escuelas y pagaron, hijas de padres que pagan taxes, casas aquí, se quedaron sin trabajo porque les empezaron a dar muchos pacientes. Se fueron y contrataron travel nurses, que son de otro estado que no contribuyen aquí a nuestro hospital.
Another example is the RNs. They went to school here. They live here. But they ended up choosing to leave UMC. And instead, the hospital brings in traveling nurses, which are not from here. And it costs a lot.
Gracias.
Muchas gracias por estar aquí con nosotros hoy. Yo sé que es un poco difícil a veces hablar enfrente de nosotros. It's intimidating, but it shouldn't be. But thank you for being here. Dándonos la información. Ya sé que UMC sí le gusta agarrar información de los trabajadores y de los patients. So aquí estamos cuando quieran para regresar a vernos más información. If you ever want to come back to UMC, make your request.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
And if we could go ahead, Mr. Nava, and take items five, six, and seven. Then in that order, please.
Absolutely, Judge. Item number five, pursuant to Texas Local Government Code, section 114.023, 114.024, 114.025, and 114.026. Please accept the attached presentation and the interfinancial report for the month ended January 2018. Interfinancial report is located on the internet at
Sorry, just really quickly on item number two. There was a quick reaction to receive the quarter report.
Sorry about that.
I'm putting a motion to like accept this.
Not move to accept the report.
Second.
Good morning, Judge.
Commissioner Perez?
Hi.
Commissioner Leon?
Hi.
Commissioner Stapp?
Hi.
Commissioner Henry? Judge Volker? Motion carries.
Sorry about that.
Good morning, Judge. And Commissioners, my name is Claudia Melendez with the Financial Report Division. And we present an unadded interim financial report for the month, January 2018. This is the report that we sent to the published in the Starman newspaper. It's the condensed financial reports. We go over the revenues for the county. This slide presented a breakdown by fund type of revenue collected with the county. General fund is highlighted. During the month, the county collect 60 millions on the general fund and 141, 141 millions year to date. This is a break down for the main source of revenue. For the most part, general fund revenue collection are following a similar trend to last year collections. The change between this point of the year compared with the last, from previous years, the changes due to proper taxes, timing, can be taxpayer payments and severance and the impact of the taxes on new constructions. Start for services, the changes due to delay in building on the federal remit programs. Sales and taxes, estate calculation and timing. Interest, the changes due to interest rate was increased in compared with last year. Miss Land's revenues, sports park rental increased during 2018. Transfer is timing.
I'm sorry, what was the, for Miss Land's revenue, what caused the change?
Miss Land's sports parks, we increase, we have more rental for the sports park.
Yeah, we're really seeing an increase. I'm seeing in tournaments, since we've gotten rid of the alcohol. Almost, it seemed, I just signed an agreement yesterday for next weekend, I want to say, for like, and it's like $6,200 a weekend for tournaments, for the rental of the sports park. And it's really ticking up.
And I've got to say, before you get off that subject, there's many teams in New Mexico that are coming here because of that, the alcohol business. So I'm very, very surprised.
And I have run into parents whose kids now play in those leagues and those tournaments. And they have said nothing but great things about the sports park and the look. And I've actually commented, they're very happy that we don't sell alcohol because of the fight factor that might occur, so.
I was hoping you guys should have looked at that too.
And the other financial sources include a transfer. And the transfer, we have a timing, change due to timing later on 2017. And the period 17, six, period six, 2017, a transfer was entered. This is the reason that we have, we see a difference between last year and this year because they booked the transfer later on the year.
On, on the fines and the forfeits, you've seen a decrease? Or not?
Yes, and I don't think that, but I think we have less cases.
That spans all the courts, the justice courts. And the cases, it varies from year to year and it's, the cycle goes up and down. You may see one month down, one month up. So we're going to monitor closely.
I'll chime in on that. I actually have my division, my RD Division Financial Recovery doing a more thorough assessment. But for volume of cases, what I'm seeing more importantly that's driving a lower collection isn't the collection effort, it's the assessments being made at the court level. Assessments are down rather significantly. So when we make the collection on that ultimate assessment, the lower assessments will result in the lower collection. My team's actually digging into some details on that, the survey report following up on that in the near future.
On this slide, general fund revenue collection are following a similar trend to last three years' collections. The tables show the evaluation for the last three years on the similar revenues and for the most important sources of revenues. The two major changes on the period four in compared with the same period last year are property taxes due to timing on increase of new constructions and charge for services due to the delay on the federal pension reimbursement programs.
I wonder what that means.
On the property taxes, I had mentioned this earlier, that because of the possibility of a law changing for the deductibility of taxes, a lot of property owners just came and paid their money in December. And we got the collection in January when it was remitted from the state. So it's timing. We'll collect all our property taxes, but you see spikes in the flow of the funds is all. It's not an actual true revenue increase, just a revenue to this time compared to last year.
And I've got a follow-up question to that. People that came in to pay.
Property taxes.
The property taxes, can they, and did they pay like, can you pay two years in advance, one year in advance?
They can pay the levy, the current levy. You can't pay in advance because you don't know what next year's taxes are.
Okay, so it was only for?
The tax assessor, at the city tax office may have some policy, but I'm not aware you can prepay your taxes ahead of time, but they may have some agreement. But you don't know the levy, so it's really money the city would be hanging on to earning interest pending the levy, which I don't think would be, I haven't heard of that happening.
I could send an email out to the city tax assessor to ask that question.
I just heard, it was, I guess it was a news article relating to exactly that.
That's a good question. Hold up, Chief.
And in terms of the federal prisoner reimbursement, when will that be?
That's prisoner, a federal prisoner's population is up on billings. That's just the timing of when the reconciliation has to be done by the jail. And their billings don't necessarily get out in time. And we don't have the information to book a receivable for it. So it's just timing. But I can tell you right now, the revenues overall are up. They may not be much up over the prior year, but the last year was up and they're continuing to be up.
Also, billing, payments on billings are dependent on the federal budget, which they were having some issues with this year.
Yeah, they put a hold on all payments because of the federal budget that could stipulate the money being remitted to the county. So even though the billing has been sent.
Next is expenditure for the year. This slide presented a breakdown by fund type of expenditure with a county. Federal, general fund is highlighted. The general fund repeated for recorded total expenditure of 21 millions and a total for the year of 71 millions. On the next slide, included expenditure breakdown. The expenditure during the year are breakdown as follows. Personal salaries and benefits, 58 millions with an increase of 1.4 millions in compared with the same period of previous year due to salary adjustment and new hires. A budget adjustment was made for 1.1 million during the period two for personal change, changes and reclassification. Approved during budget hearings and fiscal during eight. Operating expenditures, 30 millions and an increase of 2.9 millions in compared with the same period as previous year. Changes were mainly due to increasing contract services of 1.1 million and 1.5 million on reimbursement measures. Contract services budget adjustment of 315,000 was requested in order to cover agreement with Emergency Health Network to meet new statutory requirements. Approved by Commission of course in 9/25/2017. An adjustment of 45,000 was requested to cover expenses for the state and other expenses from contentions, contentions for funds. Capital outlay expenditure are 200,000 with an increase of 127,000 from the same period last year due to acquisition of equipment. Transfer out, an increase of 1.2 million in comparison with the same period as previous years due to timing on the recording and transfer between funds.
And on that one, basically what we're doing is rather than transferring funds to a grant, based on the drawdown of the expenditure of the grants, we're only funding the county's match consistent with their expenditures. That way we keep more money in the general fund. We have more money invested. We're going to be more aggressive with this hanging on to the general fund on this.
The general fund expenditures for the year in comparison two thousand and seventeen increased at three point three millions in two thousand and eighteen in comparison with the same period two thousand and seventeen. Two point seven million is increased for periods only for period four. This chart shows the percentage of expenditures in compared with the remaining general fund budget. The remainder of the core year is seventy-eight point twenty-nine percent for the year. Expenditure at the same expenditure at the same trend of the um fiscal year seven. This chart explains how the expenditure is uh broken down by function of government. About half of the expenditure are related to public safety. Twenty-five percent are related to administration of justice. Twenty-two percent of your uh general government, and the remaining five percent are related to all other functions of the government. This as like present the details on the expenditure by functions. General government expenditure for the for the year is sixty million or thirteen percent of the available budget. Administration of Justice, eighty million or twenty-five percent of the available budget. Public safety, thirty-four millions or twenty-eight percent of the available budget. The other function is three point three millions or ninety, a nineteen percent of the available budget for the year. The fund balance.
Okay, this one here, you're gonna see a little bit of difference, right now, I'm using the aggregate uh method that I've always used, which takes historical trends and projects to the future. Um, the budget did grow, we spent almost fourteen million in two thousand and seventeen, I'll be talking about it on the next item. Um, but right now, it looks like we're gonna be ending up with about eighty-one million, but once you look at what we've done in eighteen, eighteen's budget went up by over thirteen million dollars. And we're gonna, I have to work with budget policy as to what are first-time expense, or no, what are one-time expenses? What are gonna be the recurring expenses? And how much of those expenses do we really think are not gonna be spent? Because right now, my projection, you're gonna hear a little bit later, is a lot more aggressive than this, and more of a worst-case scenario. But right now, it's eighty-one, but in a little while, you're gonna be hearing uh of a fund balance of about thirteen million less. And it's just, and FYI, we're so early in the process, we've never ever done the budget projections in January based on the first three months, so we'll be talking about some more. But right now, the optimistic is eighty-one million, but the pessimistic is possibly fund balance dropping to maybe sixty-nine, seventy, okay? So like I said, just don't overreact with that, right? We're gonna be monitoring it closely, we're gonna be collaborating with budget policy as we always do, and we'll continue, and we'll be, we'll and I'll, I'll give you some more details as to as to how we're gonna be approaching it.
Any questions?
And and on top of that, I didn't mention, I was saying eighty-one at the end of this fiscal year, but the year that just ended, I'll be talking to you about it, we ended around eighty-three, but yeah. So we're in good shape right now, trends are still good.
Do you have an idea of what percentage do we actually spend of the budget? So let's say, for example, we set a budget of a hundred million or?
Well, you're gonna steal my thunder here in a way. It's about eighty-nine, eighty-nine percent.
Okay.
Based on what I'm gonna show you what we did in seventeen, we we had almost eleven percent left.
That makes sense, I mean, if it's the first quarter, we spent about twenty-one percent.
Yeah, but but I'll just hold that thought there, because uh mostly everything that's in excess is totally under your control, and it should be under your control, and a lot of it's contingencies, reserves, you have attrition, you have things happen throughout the year. And you know, you put the thirty million dollar reserve for emergencies too, and you never really wanna test that. But it's an operating one, and we have the tools now in the new um unit system to do more analytical. If you wanna squeeze that a little bit more, uh so we don't have it, but we can show you the trends over a number of years as to where the money has stayed. But I can tell you the majority of it's gonna be personnel and contingencies, okay? But it's all within your control, and it's it's a good thing to have it because you never know what's gonna happen. But we'll talk about some more.
Thank you.
Any question? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number six pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Title X, Section two-two-five-six-point-zero-zero-five. Please discuss the investment policy as of February twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen. This investment policy, when adopted, will supersede the policy adopted June twelfth, two thousand and seventeen.
Before we move on to
You know, I'm sorry, you're right.
Six, should we go and accept um presentation right of life, or does anyone want to make a motion to accept the presentation?
Okay. Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stahl.
Aye.
Commissioner Haggerty.
Aye.
Motion carries.
So yeah, she's up both the clean version and the red line version, are you just gonna focus on the changes in the red line?
Uh, yeah, um, and I wasn't here at the last meeting and apologize, um, but my office has been collaborating with county admin budget policy. Uh, the commissioners have directed county administration about for an RFP, for an investment advisor. We've worked on the proposed RFP. One of the issues was that you currently don't authorize an investment advisor in your policy. And public funds investments totally allows it. But if we're gonna send out an RFP or a proposal to help us with our investing, and our policy doesn't even address allowing an advisor, what we're doing right now is just putting the language in there that the court allows for an investment advisor. We're we're gonna, we're modifying the policy uh just to do a little bit of cleanup. Um, obviously, it still has the auditor as the investment officer, that's totally the commissioner's court decision. You can, you can assign it to an, to to an employee, three of yourselves can be investment officers, or an employee or an investment pool, okay? Those are the only exceptions that I'm aware of unless the county attorney understands differently. But so that's, right now it says my name, you can, you can amend this policy anytime you want. If you have, every week if you have a change, so I'm telling you, we annually, you have to do an investment policy update. Last time we did it was June of two thousand and seventeen. So the only real change in here is to add the investment advisor. I took out some procedures that we had in there from my office, because really, we shouldn't be talking about what our procedures are in the policy. The procedures are done separately as prescribed by the auditor as far as we see the disbursement of us. And that'll continue, and whatever the court decides, we will go ahead and and work with you on that with county administration. Um, but other than that, I just did some clarifications so that the investment advisory firm that's proposing understands. You will be helping the county propose what investments um you suggest. If this policy doesn't have some options that are allowable under public funds investment, I would assume they would come back to you and say, you guys ought to consider this and put it in your policy. Well, and then you can just go back and amend your policy.
And that review and recommendation cycle is actually a component of the RFP that we will hopefully award to an investment advisory firm.
We have provided data for the, I think, the last full fiscal year of our cash flow, basically. These are the investment options available, you tell us what you would have proposed versus what we did. And so they can give us something so that you all can make a decision based on what they're proposing, and obviously, we have to vet it out to make sure we're in agreement with what they would have done, that we could have done. But the investment policy has to be approved so that they have a basis to do a proposal based on what you're allowing. And this is open to any suggestions that you all have, if you wanna add anything to this investment policy. Uh, but at this point, I think it allows very aggressive investing. We have one issue that was, that is still pending, that it's not gonna be a problem, but we'll, we'll get it real soon. We're waiting for the safekeeping agreement, so if we do anything that requires uh buying an instrument that has to be held in safekeeping, that we have that agreement, and I think it's with Frost, Frost Bank right now. But we have to have that agreement so that we can, we'll have to transfer monies to Frost to effectuate the transactions occurring based on what the advisor, if you all, approval advisor, you know, based on those investment options and based on the procedures that are set. Um, but James, you wanna go through some of the, some of the changes?
Some of the changes are, we put into the uh policy is a description of what happened, why the investment treasury is under our, the attorney's office. We also made changes to clarify the uh description of the personnel involved in the investments.
Which will, if, you know, if that changes, it'll change, and we'll modify it accordingly. I know the county attorney had a concern about not approving this because, but this is the way it is now, and a month from now, it can be totally different. And then everybody will just have to comply with it, so.
We also added in for the investment advisor the language there, which we didn't have before.
And and if I didn't say it, I think I did, but I just wanna reiterate it, you can put as many individuals that you want as investment officers. A lot of counties have, they have like a committee, you basically set the investment officers, and now you have this collaborative group that's working together on what we should be doing as a county for your approval, so it's it's, it's up to you all what you decide to do.
A lot of it is just clarification language in here. We still have the same restrictions on to, on the funds as to general fund, you can invest pretty much anything. Debt service, we're limited to meeting our debt service payments. Our main debt service payment is February fifteenth. Our funds come in from just end of December through February, so we really don't have a lot of time to invest money there, it's short term, that means we put it out into the pool.
So if the investment advisor comes in and says we wanna buy securities, we just, our office is gonna just have the obligation to say, okay, as long as you or or, as long as we agree that what you're doing will help us meet our obligations when they become due, we're not gonna have a problem, okay? And as long as they don't get us into a risk area where interest rates change and allow potential to lose money, or you know, and that's why we try to set the risk levels, and I think they're reasonable at this point, you know.
We went through, changed where we had numbers, for like example, as on repurchase agreements, that'd be not just four days, we have four there, it's not spelled out.
Yeah, a lot of it was cosmetic.
So their, their team proposed the changes to us uh in admin and budget and fiscal. We shot recommendations back and forth, and and we're comfortable with all the amendments that are being made and proposed, and that'll allow us to proceed with the RFP for financial advisory services. We recommend for stuff.
And one of the things we did strike on this is the requirement for the broker dealers to go through the investment, to go through our ethics training. And the reason for that is, it used to be those, the ethics training, the list is published of who had taken it. It's no longer being published, so I have no way of verifying it.
That's just one minor change.
So there's still a requirement for them to do the ethics though?
And they're required by uh FINRA and other, or other reporting entities that they have to comply with to have ethics training as a program here. There's a lot more requirements on them now than there was in two thousand and seventeen.
So basically, you're saying that we were doing a double standard, that they're already held to the standards that are in the FIA and already in the policy.
So one small typo we cut last minute is uh, is it a sort of exposed, it should be exposure, so it's just a, a type which is a
Okay, we'll get that, thank you.
Grammatical correction, nothing, nothing changing the procedural.
Page, page nine.
Page six, it's a nine of thirty-six, it's technically six-six.
And so because they are, they have their own ethics training or standards to to go through, we're removing them from having to go through our process?
Right, because we can't verify the training.
Okay, but bottom line is, it's a policy of the court, what do you all wanna do?
Well, I don't think the court can override the Ethics Commission's requirements for a vendor to take the
We're not gonna override it.
And be both.
We're not overriding, that was something I put into this policy.
So are we, are we doing a double standard right now, or are we gonna do it twice, and is there a problem with that?
No, I think, I think that we're saying two different things.
So page nine is what I'm talking about, just removing them from the rules and procedures of the El Paso County Ethics Commission, it must submit the application forms for consideration, it must complete the ethics training on an annual basis. I, when I first read it, I just thought, we're removing them from the standard that any other vendor would have to go through, but I don't know if my interpretation of that is correct.
You don't have to have that in the contract, it's a requirement.
So the county's, ethics policy is on the one side, okay.
So whether it's in that con, whether it's in here or not, that it's a requirement for any vendor that the county does business with over fifty thousand dollars a year, if they're gonna, and and if they're gonna submit a proposal.
And it's over fifty, then they should just run.
Then um, one of the forms that they have to complete with their submission is the training form, where they get the information and say, yes, we understand this, we've been, we understand this training. And they have to, for us to even get their package from purchasing, they have to do it.
Yeah, but purchasing this quarter is the twelve ninety-five.
Yeah, that's separate from what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I'm, she's right, it's over fifty, they're gonna have to comply with it, otherwise they're not gonna be responsive there.
Who maintains the list of who uh vendors who have completed that?
It's online.
We'll have to go back and look for it again.
Because I have looked online for it.
I I can show you, I'll shoot it to you.
We'll, we'll, we'll deal with that. We'll follow up on that, with purchasing. The bottom line is, they, whatever they propose has to include the ethics. If they wanna do business with the county, and they will be literally a vendor.
I think there was only one other question that I had. Um, I don't wanna take away from you going into the explanation, but page fourteen, um, under the repurchase agreement, it went from ninety days to forty days, and I just wondered, it was such a drastic change in timing that I didn't know.
Well, repurchase agreements, that's high risk, you typically don't wanna go too long on this.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
It's because there was, we had earlier in the policy, it was four days, and then later ninety days, it should be four days.
I didn't imagine, to me at least, it was, those are the two questions I had.
Yeah, and and this is basically in response to our, our fiduciary responsibility to annually update it and to try to meet your, what we thought was your needs.
Any other comment, commissioners, do you have any other questions?
In my understanding, the the RFP will be on the agenda this, this much, or it's Monday?
No, not, it's on, it's Monday, we wanted to get the investment policy, so today will be no actions, a presentation.
Yes.
Uh, the action item is on Monday's agenda, to accept the changes.
But we wanted your input.
And if you're in agreement with it, then Monday you'll act on it, or we can, whatever's a pleasure, of course.
The, the term for the investment advisor is similar to our financial advisor?
Maximum is two years.
Well, it's statutory.
Advisor is um a five-year contract, three years.
Yeah, it's not limited, I don't think, not, not like the advisor. Not like, not like the investment advisor.
And I'm sure it goes without saying, but the, and I don't think it's something we have to write in the policy, but the, the investment advisor will have the ability to consult with the court, I guess, on the development of policies that make sense for for the investment policy, and it's not explicit, but I'm sure it's sort of implied in the
In our P, do we write?
You have to direct who they work with.
I mean, it's definitely something, they're a vendor, I mean, they're, we're their customer, we can direct them.
And I do like the option of looking at forming an investment advisory team that that collectively needs and reviews recommendations, I think it's a better option for the policy.
And that they communicate to the team or who was in charge of the team, the chair or whatever.
And I'm sure we've done this, and I'm sure it probably comes through during the budget process, but we've, we've tracked, I'm sure, the earnings that we've seen over the last several years, just to maybe even see where we were before and where we'll be with this investment.
Oh yeah, well, rates have been going up, 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 and as they have been, we've been shifting. Uh, and as, as we give you the investment quarterlies, you'll see that the, the percentage change has been exponential.
Our last quarterly investment report, we're, our interest rates were up a hundred and sixty-one percent, a hundred and forty-one percent.
And that's monthly that we're tracking the changes, right?
Well, we, we do the report every three months.
We do report quarterly, but we track, we keep track of uh where the yields are on a daily basis. As of uh today, fixed goals at uh one point three-six, fixed pool prime is at one point five-nine. Compared to the bank, the highest yield we'd get there would be in the seventy-five to two-hundred million at one point two percent.
And and one of the challenges that we've had is that some of the other investment options that are out there are not, have not been significantly different from what we're doing. So you have to, you have to evaluate the additional risk. So you have to, you have to evaluate the additional risk for five basis points and the cost of all the work that it takes to do that type of fund investment. Rather than having it in a pool where you can pull it in and take it out pretty, pretty easily. But like you said, we're open to, because the, the thing that's going to get you, the interest rates will go longer. And right now, I don't think anybody, even at the investment conference that was held, I think last week or so, and advising anybody to go up more than two years. When we're sticking to a year.
Because right now, to give you an example, is benchmark treasury rates. Three months is at one point six one, six months is at one point eight two, twelve months is at two percent, five years two point six one.
We'd go five years.
Uh, ten year is at two point nine one and thirty year is at two point two.
But just to qualify my statement is that, you know, we've always talked about, we have a core. You know, say we have ten million dollars that we know we've never ever gone down low enough on our cash flows. And we could go a little bit longer on, on ten million for three years, five years. And it's a matter of laddering with the five years so that everything, because they don't have an investment that's actually out there five years. It's one year, two year, three year, and then you start rolling them and then eventually you have stuff that's sprung out for a five-year period and it's maturing over, over, revolving cycle. We used to do that with certificates of deposit back in the eighties and we had fourteen percent interest.
You do it with agencies, treasuries.
A lot of work.
IMV is our depository.
One of the days.
Yes, those were the days.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Item number seven, receive presentations on the fiscal year two thousand seventeen preliminary financial results. The fiscal year two thousand eighteen interim financial report and the proposed fiscal year two thousand nineteen budget process and take appropriate action.
So we're going to start with the auditor presentation first and that will be any questions?
And I'm going to try not to duplicate too much that was already settled monthly for January. One thing I'll say, so I'm going to try to make it quick, I think I have a total of eighteen slides. Is that we have never ever done revenue estimates in January. That the information available is not sufficient to really make a good projection. But I've, I've done, done my best to, to provide it and I've, I've given a lot of information, some extensive reports on revenues expenses. And I, I've requested that we start working together more to identify where we're going to spend or not going to spend. One, one thing that's a key factor right now is that we have never closed our fiscal year, literally closing the fiscal year until around March, April because of the cap process. Well, since budget can't do its budget process early because they can't use the system until the prior year is closed. I can't do my projections in New Brain until the year's fiscal close is, is actually closed. So we closed it early February this year. We just had to make a decision because we couldn't move forward. Our goal is from here forward that we're going to close the fiscal year in January. And we'll do whatever we have to to make ends meet to do our annual financial report, okay? And then that way, budget will always have a good cycle where they can get kicked off. With time, I'll be able to do my projections through the, the, the new brain system, okay? So that, that's a goal and I think it'll improve things drastically. With that, I'll go ahead and get kicked off. Okay. Uh, presentation and information we're providing right now is linked to the county's strategic plan of financially sound county government. I'm going to briefly go over the twenty seventeen versus twenty sixteen revenues, variances, expenses and the appropriation variances. Um, I'm going to give you the projected fund balance that I've already kind of busted, I've already kind of let it, the cat out of the bag as to where we ended preliminarily. Twenty eighteen, the first quarter as of January, even though my projections are based on information through December. Um, it was relevant since we're talking about January already, so the eighteen versus seventeen, revenues, expenses and the budget. And then the un-audited projection for the end of eighteen. And then the preliminary, just a little bit of information on nineteen since the, the data, like I say, is, is not to the point where I can give you a, a, a good estimate. Uh, I, I'll give you some summary changes. Okay, here, um, basically just want to point out that the fiscal year ended preliminarily with a net change in revenues. Revenues growing by, by about seven and a half million, up about almost three percent. Expenses grew by almost fourteen million dollars, up by five point six four percent. Twenty sixteen, revenues minus expenses was fourteen point seven. In twenty seventeen, eight point six roughly, and it's all preliminary still. Uh, the variance, this has always been a real concern. The projections in sixteen was budget versus actual was eight million or three point five one percent variance. In seventeen, it ended up at three point one five. Well, the one thing that we've always had a discussion on is federal prisoners. I budgeted five fifty for revenues because it changes. We've had some years where we've dipped, we've gone up, we're talking about possibly a contract, it comes and goes. So I take out federal prisoners, in twenty sixteen, my variance on revenues versus actuals was one point two seven and in seventeen it was point nine five. I think we've, we've got, I'm not conservative in my estimates and we've gotten closer than we've ever. And we're still going to be pushing it to try to be as accurate as possible. That's why I'm qualifying doing an estimate based on the first three months of the year. I don't have enough information, but I'm so willing to work with you all and, and figure out what we can, what we can come up with. The general fund budget variances, if you look at it, the significant portion of it is federal prisoners. The overall budget for seventeen was three fourteen, twenty-seven balance of budget, thirty million was an emergency reserve. So you take it out, you get two fifty-six and then down here is just a recap of what the overall variance was and what it is after taking out federal prisoners. Actual expenditure variances. The biggest change, I think, is that we had a, we had a, a transfer out over here. Uh, this is not variance, this is actually twenty seventeen versus sixteen. We, we actually did it one time for road paving for the road in Ridge. But overall, the budget was two forty-two after taking out the designations. So the overall change in, in expenses is, is an increase of thirteen point six by point six four percent. And these are just the major, the major changes, most of it was personnel. Uh, retirement was, was an increase, professional. And this here, you're going to see some increases and decreases. I think there was a change in the, in the medical on the sheriffs. I think we, we changed the way we do that now, we have it contracted out. These are the appropriation variances that I talked about. The variance overall was twenty-nine point three million or, or ten point two eight percent. And if I extract the, the increases, the material increases, twenty-five point seven million or eighty-seven and a half percent of that. The bulk of it was personnel, as I said earlier, uh, reserved for salaries, uh, professional services general, contracted services general. Operating contingencies, there's capital outlays, equipment, it's a variety. And like I said, we have the tools now with Munis to go ahead and evaluate this a lot closer. Fund balance. We ended twenty seventeen with twenty sixteen, the beginning of the, of the year, we had had twenty, seventy-five point six. Revenues grew by about two point five eight percent for a total of two sixty-four. Expenditures, two fifty-seven, a net change of approximately seven point seven. We're looking at ending at eighty-three point three and I qualify that. Or we have any contingencies or liabilities that come forward that I have to book, which I don't know yet in our cap, I may have to book some additional expenses. And it could be we have some prior liabilities that are no longer liabilities and it'll do the opposite effect, but until I have more information, I can't actually.
So something I just want to add on to this slide, when we were in budget hearings last year, our estimate that we were working with for your planning purposes was eighty-two million dollars. So we finished about one point five eight percent off of that eighty-two million dollar estimate in hearings.
Okay, January of eighteen versus January of seventeen. The big change, ten million dollars in revenues or seven point six four percent. That's not growth in revenue, as I explained, that property taxes are the bulk of what happened. We had people paying earlier than they did in prior years. Expenses are up a net, okay? Increases minus decreases, three point three or four point eight seven percent.
And if I can, if I can chime in on that one, as far as people, people, who listen, as far as people prepaying taxes into their escrow. Uh, last year's volume, the non-gate push because of the federal discussion happening was fifty-eight thousand dollars in escrow. This year was four hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars in escrow, so about a four hundred and one thousand dollar increase in people prepaying their taxes into escrow. I got the response back from this.
Okay, and then this, this analysis here is of, of the changes, I took every increase that was over twenty-five thousand. And, and let me just qualify, I didn't say it earlier, but I think you should know by now, with Munis, revenues are negatives, expenses are positives. So when you see a negative variance on revenues, it's, it's going down, but typically revenues are negative and, and expenses are positive. These are the expenditure decreases, as I said. These are increases of six point three million which netted with decreases. Decrease of three point eight which added to the net three point three million. And like I say, some of these are, are being caused because you're, you have a shift. Um, I think there was a major one in here, this workers comp, when we went live with payroll in October, well, we had to set up an interface. And the interface didn't quite get done in time, so there was a delay in the charges being fact, you know, interface into the system. So there's a catch-up and you'll see that be back on track in, in February. It's transfer match, I, I expressed, uh, I gave an explanation that we don't transfer money to the grants anymore, only up to what they've spent to date. So we can keep more money in the, in the fund, general fund. A budget comparison. Overall, anything that grew in the, in the twenty eighteen budget by over a hundred thousand. We added twenty-one and a half million dollars to, to various accounts. But at the same time, we decreased by nine million dollars of variety of accounts. And some of this was because of shifting of the way we expensed things. We have a contract now for, for commissary at the jail versus paying for food. So you'll see food going down, but you'll see professional services going up. This is the fund balance I was telling you, right now we're at eighty-three, aggregate is eighty-one. And in a few minutes, I'll be showing you my, my other projection. Apologize for this being hard to read, but it's a massive worksheet until I can get it into New Brain. My goal is eventually we'll be able to bring the New Brain system up on the screen, be able to show you some stuff and get some really, really good reports. But bottom line is my revenue estimate shows that we're, we're growing some of our revenues about two point two million. But we have some revenues that are going down by a, by about a million or so. So the net increase to my revenues right now for the, for the general fund are about one point one million dollars. That's early on, okay? Sports park we talked about, I've seen some really good trends with sports park, but I don't want to overreact right now, but it's looking good, okay? And we'll make sure we stay on top of that. Because some of the decreases, I have a concern on the auto sales tax. It depends on how many people purchase cars and it goes up and down each year. We actually, we actually had a decline in seventeen and the projection was kind of, so we kind of, this year's projection is kind of high. So I expect we might have, have a little bit of a decline. Engine defense reimbursement, I think we had an increase in prior year. It's not expected to, to, to follow through in eighteen. But some of these decreases, I would just, you know, the, the one coming to fines and forfeits, we talked about that, we're going to investigate it. This is the summary, I did an estimate on enterprise fund, general fund and special revenue. I noted on the reports I gave to budget policy, there are some special revenue accounts where we're concerned that they may not have sufficient funds this year. Some of their, their fund balances and the revenue streams are declining. So we need to focus on them now to make sure they don't overspend on their budgets and it's what we need to do for the future year. But I'm projecting right now, based on the FY eighteen budget growing by almost fourteen million dollars. And there's some one-time expenses in there that I'm aware of, but there's others that I really don't, I, I really don't have enough information to tell you that, that we're going to end up with a lot of budget variance again, like we did in seventeen. So right now I'm projecting that you're going to have about seventy million and that's the worst case scenario as of the end of eighteen. But like I say, next month, uh, next time we do our estimates, I'm going to be basing it off of February numbers. Because we're going to close probably the first week in March and we'll get busy on our revenue estimate. And that number will definitely probably change, we'll be working with budget and policy. We'll identify where we have those, those variances and, and if they're not true variances and we're truly going to bring our fund balances down. That's not necessarily a bad thing, because at some point governments need to right-size their fund balance. And I, I, I failed to mention to you when I was talking about the fund balance as of the end of seventeen. Right now, uh, the fund balance projection, uh, ratio didn't hit fifteen percent, okay? But it was, it was about fourteen point five, you know, which is excellent, which is excellent. So the, the sixty-nine, almost seventy is like I say, take it with a grain of salt. We're going to continue focusing on it, we're going to scrub the numbers and make sure we can get, but we have, we have a good start and it's a lot of positive benefits of starting early, okay? But the estimate is highly qualified. So with that, any questions? And the reason I say is that, don't think you need to cut, cut, cut in the budget because I'm not telling you that, that you have a economic issue, that you, that revenues are down. I, I don't have any indications right now that, that your revenues are not going to come in the same or better than the prior year. It's on the expenditure side and it has been on the last couple of years. But like I say, it's not a problem if they're one time and they're not going to be recurring. And you, 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 this court has done an outstanding job actively monitoring their budget and making sure that you stay, live within your means, so like.
So as you saw that inter-monthly financial that they did on the prior item, that, that swing is anywhere between the worst case scenario sixty-nine. But the, if based on history and running projections on history, it's, it's near the eighty-one. It'll be, it'll be below the eighty-one because of expenditures we know are coming up this year, but it, I don't think it'll be, I don't think it'll be close to sixty.
And, and I guess on my.
We're, we're very close.
On my aggregate, you know, the overall, the revenues actually have been around five percent growth. Well, the year that just ended, our growth was only two point six five percent. And our expenses on average have been averaging fourteen million dollars, the last five years, they've averaged fourteen million a year or five, five point, five and a half percent. And so if you can see, if we've got two and a half percent revenue growth and we're spending five, five and a half, on my aggregate, I'm capping it at five percent. That we don't spend more than five, because I know you all will want to live within your means. And I know it looks funny when we get to five years down the road and we show we're going the whole. It's because I have a revenue growth that I can't inflate because property taxes is set by this organization. And sales tax can be affected by an economic impact, okay? So just, just understanding those, those scenarios that were, the projection shows we're bringing in less money than we're spending. And that's where every year you all reconcile that as to what we're going to do from year to year to year. But we will be focusing on a five-year projection where you can control what you want to see in the next five years in projecting expenses. Which makes everything a lot easier, um, in going through this process. So we've got a lot of goals and a lot of objectives to meet and we're here to help reach those.
For twenty seventeen, I, I don't know if you've got these numbers, but what is the savings that the county realized on unfilled positions, FTEs? That maybe would take, uh, unemployment exits, then we hire this person, you know, the, the, the savings that we've realized.
So I'll give you a portion of that and that, that'll be the reserve for salary adjustment. The two point six million dollar number we had in there is part of it because we factor, we, we factor, we only transfer into departments from that reserve. The amount necessary to run their salary and fringe through the end of the year. So a portion of that two-six will be for, for pure vacancies, I'll have to, we'll have to run a separate vacancy report.
You ran this number for me recently about, you gave, you gave us this recently. What percentage of budgeted salaries are we expending?
On salaries, it's closer to ninety-six percent.
I, I thought it was even a little bit higher this year, you ran me a history.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll look back, it's, it's, it's above, it's above ninety-six.
I want to say just the one, the, he, he ran me a history of like budgeted position versus actual expenditures. And it was about four percent, but it's, it got, it's tapering, it's less.
Yeah, so, so it's, it's, if I went back five or six years and it's a report I always get to Commissioner Betis, I even go to the court at large last year. It's gone from ninety-four to ninety-four and a half to ninety-five, it's over ninety-six right now. So we're, we're starting to, to compress that, that savings, we're, we're keeping positions filled longer.
So we're filling them quicker, is what you're saying?
Or they're staying filled longer?
Yeah, a combination.
You hit on a good point and that's, we're going to really have to do a lot of analysis, just for one example here. If you see overtime, we had, we had about $600,000 in in variance that we didn't spend. Well, I can tell you that 16, we had this drastic reduction in overtime because of the sheriff's efforts. 17, your overtime grew, like over the prior year. And so we anticipated that overtime was going to be higher, but obviously the county took, did, took action and we didn't spend the money we thought we were going to spend. So I can, it, the way, just the way it shows is that there's still active management of our expenses to make sure that we don't spend for overtime when we don't have to. So that's a good sign, even though we don't show a savings here, we we have a variance, even though the expenses are going back up, it's just, you know, it gets right-sized. But there's a lot of analysis that needs to be done to to answer a lot of your questions and try to help us move in the future.
Which we'll be working over, over the spring and summer to con in on those so that you're making the best informed decisions.
Thank you.
And I guess, sort of, sort of into that, I I think I've asked this before, right, it's something that I've wondered about. When when we appropriate the funding for COLAs or merit, that's appropriated like something like six months into the fiscal year, correct? Or, wait, it is not done at the beginning of the year?
So it's appropriated at the beginning, we begin making the transfers in about, in about the spring. We usually do it in the second, like the second quarter of the year, we do a preliminary transfer.
For the, for the second COLA?
Yes.
We're working on it right now?
So usually we make it in the spring and then toward the end of the summer, we make a second allocation based off of any changes that take place.
And so why is it transferred at that timeframe? Is it, is there a specific accounting purpose?
No, just just based on, so that, so then, actually, the, the, no accounting purpose, but for budgetary planning. I'd rather do that before we get into the crux of our budget hearing, so we can give you better estimates on the recommendations.
Yeah, the thing you need to always keep in mind is you have to budget 100% of your workforce. And attrition, you never know what it's going to be. So the fact that you have attrition and they don't transfer it until mid-year, it leaves that money in the account. But at the beginning of the year, you could have never known what that was going to be. And if you don't budget for it, well, you're, you're in a short and now you're going to have to scrape up money from other accounts to cover, you know? So it's normal to have that excess in those salary accounts, because you really, you budget 3,000 positions, you need to fund those positions.
But on the percentage, that percentage is slowly, it's taking about a half point a year.
Because your attrition is declining, I mean, it has for a number of years. So with that, any questions?
Okay, we're going to, I think, cut over to your presentation, Walton.
Morning, Judge Commissioners, Wally Hargrove from the Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy, joined by Ms. Gaby Fettle, my deputy director. Going to go over, I've got a few slides on the the process, the budget calendars. The process is already started on our side and I'll scroll over some key dates with you. So the overview today, we'll go over the budget calendar. You've gotten a lot of invites, you'll be getting more future invites on your calendars to lock up your your time. Then go over the budget process review, some preliminary revenue estimates, preliminary expenditure and reserve overview. How Mr. Dion's presentation he gave you ties into the budget for FY19. Discuss the funding and carryover funding for our strategic plan needs. And then go over any re-appropriations we need to do in FY18 or 19 that may be unspent, that Edward may be tying into his numbers that banking has gone. And then lastly, close out with departmental budget kickoff. So Ms. Fettle just handed out to you the calendar update. I'm going to open it and make it bigger here. So on your calendar, this is just for your preliminary purpose, to see what those key dates are. Anything in there on the calendar that has a circle are budget activity dates. Anything item on there with a star is our FY19 CIP process dates, as you can see, excuse me, FY18 CIP process, that, let's see. Anything with the inverted triangle is the CIP 19 dates. So as you can see on your calendar, January 3rd is our, our budget process for FY19 kickoff with departments. You receive your, your request for FY, your request for FY19 CIP funding. Anything with the the square is the budget process begin and end, so you'll, you'll see two main squares, the budget process kickoff starts with the departments on March 1st. And the budget process, we have planned to culminate with the adoption of the budget on August 27th. We went over this calendar yesterday with UMC as well, we have a pre-meeting with them before you have your Thursday meetings on them with the, with the court. And UMC is also equally enthusiastic. I've run into a number of department head, department heads that say, now that we know this is the calendar, we like an early calendar, we like starting the process early and finishing earlier. And being, the departments are much more engaged this year, the calendars are out front of them, they're on our, they're on our gen, they're on our website. They've gotten a slew of calendar invites and departments are excited to have this, this budget planning process underway and and finished early. And then the last, the last one on the, the little Pentagon shape is dates that are relevant to processes we will take with HR activity. Whether it's requests for people, review of the act, the personnel action forms. And then the very last date on here, you'll see that last box, that's October 1 and that's when the new FY19 budget will be in effect. So that's just a brief overview of the calendar.
And as a matter of information, we will be handing this out to departments on March 2nd, right after the kickoff, when we send all the documents, including a memo that the, the system is open, et cetera. And as things come up or changes need to happen, we will be giving those updates as well.
And I'm sorry, are we also including the judiciary in this process?
Absolutely.
Okay, good.
Unfortunately, I've already told budget, I'm out, I'm out of town the first, second, and third of August.
Yeah, you actually, last year, when we sent the the notice out in August or September of last year, I think you got your first notice from HR locking up dates and you're like, I'm already locked up. So.
This has been on my calendar.
Yes, sir, yeah, we understand that. We'll do everything we can to accommodate a majority of the calendars as possible. Moving forward on the process, I'll give you a budget process overview, as I mentioned. Departments are excited with with the process starting earlier, the CIP has already kicked off. Our plans are to maintain the same threshold overview with the court, where we we change budgets by more than 4% or $5,000. You will receive the administrative departmental overview that you received last year, that will happen in the last week of July, I think you've got that slated for. And then any other specific departments that Mrs. Keller is aware of in county administration, where the court wants a focused discussion on those, she'll be planning those as well. And if you have any desire for any departments above and beyond that, we'll, we'll pull them into the schedule.
On those departmental overviews, I do want to mention, the court gave me some feedback on those last year. And we plan to make those a little more informational and relevant to their budget request or anything major going on in their department. So it won't be, we're, we're basically going to enhance them and that's based on feedback I heard from the court last year, this last budget cycle, on the departmental overviews.
So those, so that's, and that's the last bullet there, the departments will be making those presentations, we're going to make them. I'm not pulling up the big worksheets on the screen, you'll have the big worksheets, you'll have all the detail that's underlying the recommendations and the departmental requests. But the sheets, the information we're going to pull up is going to be more PowerPoint-driven, more summary information. And when we do have a department come in, we're going to talk about their budgets, whether they are general funds, special revenue, enterprise. So when Norma comes in, Norma has, she has basically, all of the above. She's going to talk about her collective budget at large and then we'll talk about the revenue stream as well. So we're not going to have a expense and appropriation discussion on one week and a revenue discussion on the, on the following, we will have those simultaneously.
Which I think, that also came from feedback from the court. And as, as we've learned, it's, you see a different picture when you see the revenue and expense together. And some departments obviously have no revenue. They're, they're general funded departments, they're not designed to generate revenue, ITD, for example. But we will, we'll provide that information holistically.
So the presentation you received earlier and included in our preliminary budget process, we've received the preliminary revenue estimates from the county auditor, we got those the last day of January. They closed the fiscal year early as we've ever closed the fiscal year on the system. And I'm, and we are excited that in the future, our goal is to close it even a month earlier, because that allows you to have summary annual information. Allows us our cost allocation faster and allows us to be more engaged in a, in a more productive budget cycle with much more certainty. So again, we'll, we'll, like in the years past, we've been very close collaboration with the auditor's office on a very routine basis. Literally every month he gives us those estimates, we will give him feedback on what what our feelings are on those. Major areas subject to change on your revenue estimates, as usual, property tax. Property tax will change every year by a fairly significant portion based on appraisals on, and also new properties coming onto the roll. Last year, $780 million of property came into the roll, the year before, $750 million. So anticipate that number is going to grow at a similar pace in the $800 million range. Even when you maintain the same tax rate this year, 45 and a quarter cents, that generates about $3.9 million of new revenue to the county that we use to 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 balance the future year appropriation requests. And I'll go over some of those key, key factors we use that for. Sales tax growth is always a large component that that will get tweaked over that time, because it's a fairly material component of the budget, about $48 million. We'll look at the charges for services and then also investment, investment income. And also the potential impact from new strategies that the court may choose to approach, so.
Can I chime in one more thing?
Certainly.
I've had discussion with you, I know Economic Development is working on it, but I'm asking for them to give me a projection on the 3D ones. This is, and I want the impact per agreement for hotel, motel, property taxes, whatever. So that we can monitor the amount of rebates we're giving versus the revenues. So I can see as the revenues are changing and we're rebating monies, what impact is it having on our revenue estimate? You know, are we actually, I guess the bottom line is, is that, are we giving away our hotel motel money? Or does the growth in hotel motel money, and that's something that we all need to know. So without having that information, and we want to build it into our forecast. So we know next five years, here's what we've already agreed to give away, here's what the projection on that revenue is. Just so that we're making, and you all have the information when you're making decisions in the future, okay? So I think it's something that you all need, but I definitely need as a revenue estimator and budget needs it also, because it affects the overall picture.
I don't know if we're going to be able to do exactly, I had asked Wally, Wally had talked about how we could break down each 381 and the corresponding revenue. But they're still working out to see if there's a way where each, each, the, the incoming revenue, even though it would be either property tax or hot tax or sales tax, whatever it may be, that almost like to carve that revenue out to track it separately from our, like, here's property tax revenue. Well, here's property tax revenue from this 381.
So you just, so the netting, the netting effect, so the true growth?
And it's, you can actually carve it out, but like.
And it's really like, the, the amelization schedule that you provide, if you say it's over 20 years, well, we spread that over 20 years to the future. But Gatsby 77 requires, and they're asking for information on the contract and what you're committed to and what the revenues are.
So it's just one of the accounting, accounting standards.
Yes, we, we have an obligation to do that, they're going to make it, make the source reporting it.
In that light, what Mr. Dion was mentioning about knowing what's due during the term of the 381s, whether they're five, seven, 10, or 20 years. The other thing that that I've tasked my analysts with is as they're meeting with the departments and overviewing those requests. Not only are they looking at the historical, but looking at any, that historical change that flies under the radar. You know, things, departments that are changing by 2 and 3%, but we don't discuss at the 4% level. We're focusing on that and make sure that we're, we're ensuring it's an appropriate change. But we're also asking departments when we meet with them, this is your FY19 request, but I'd rather have the court more informed. I need to know that if I've got a big bump coming in '20 or FY2022, I'd like to at least to get the big, the big numbers on our, on our radar at least five years out in advance, because again, knowing that we've got significant changes either in revenue up, down, or expenditures up and down. I'd rather, I'd rather know about that now and see what that foreseeable, foreseeable five-year window is going to look like. Because the decisions you make today could very likely be impacted in the very immediate future. So that's a little more, I think, we're doing as well. As a number, the Mr. Dion's preliminary revenue estimates are up 1.1 million dollars or 0.43%. And note, that doesn't include the significant changes on, on taxes. So so that, that number in and out of itself, if I take taxes into account alone, with normal change, that's a closer to a 5 and a half million dollar number. The preliminary without taxes and any change is 1.1 million. Fund balance overview, you heard earlier, 83 million dollars is where we think we're going to close without any significant accruals coming to to light in the next 45 days. That's within 1.58% of our estimates that were provided to you last July of 82 million dollars. Is FY18, and I bolded and I should have made it flashing, very preliminary, is, is 69, 69 million dollars. And that's, that's, that's the worst case picture, assuming that all 13 million we appropriated are spent in entirety and that other, other appropriations are spent as well. So I'm going to say that's the, that's the low end. It's going to end somewhere in between that 81 to, I want to say probably mid-70 range, but that's, that's mine, not his. So we'll, we'll, we'll come to terms and we, we're going to aggressively over that simple, so it's a TBD.
And a lot of that is like the additional 3 million we did towards roads and things.
Where, and the other things that we've got planned, you know, we've got the money allocated in alignment with our strategic plan, the penny for stormwater, the infrastructure and the money we're putting into our transportation projects, that we want to leverage, civil, civil commodities. We've got to look at what our expectation is to extend that and or reappropriate that in the future as well.
You got 5 million dollar transfer?
The transfer is out for a total of like 5 million, so we just need to look at that number to see what it comprises.
But the process, of course, will always take into account our, our strategic plan needs, both the, the strategic plan that's in place for FY18 and ensuring that, that we've taken those into consideration. Anything that we haven't done, that we deem appropriate, and we work very closely with, with the court and with administration is making recommendations to re-appropriating those, to make sure we accomplish that strategic goal. And lastly, taking in, into account FY19 new appropriations for strategic planning that we've just finished the draft run. And every, every place that we were in those discussions for three, three days, I'm writing dollar signs and, and working on getting estimates on those. So we can have those in your preliminary ledger as well. Last component of the budget process includes the new cost programs and impacts. So things that will include in your budget that you see on a, on a usual recurring basis is your contractual requirements, whether that was contracts or collective bargaining. We will have a collective bargaining process kickoff for the FY2020 cycle. So FY19 will be the last year of the collective bargaining agreement, and we'll start those negotiations in FY, during FY19 next year.
So that's an example of where we'll see an increase, because we'll budget to bring in a contractor to help us with those negotiations.
We, we haven't started that process yet.
No, sir, it's for FY20.
FY20, yes. But during FY19, we will appropriate the funds to have our, our, our third-party assistance on the contract negotiations, so that will be a new expense next year.
So we won't start negotiations in 2018?
No, we'll start then, we'll start then, 2019, no, we'll start then, 2019. So the collective bargaining, software and hardware agreements, many of their contracts that we are aware of in those increases. Strategic planning items, as I mentioned before, will be current strategic planning and the new plan that the court will adopt in the very near future. Our salary plan, the ongoing funding of the step, we will work and watch the, the, the cost of living changes in the CPI and index those appropriately. This year, as an example, 4.1 million dollars listing impact for salary and, and cost of living. So we will take those into account and include those in there, and those related costs, whether it's retirement, health and life, related benefits. Staffing changes on an annual basis tend to have somewhere in between 1 to 2 million dollars of staffing changes. Our lowest in the last few years has been 1.2, highest is kind of a little over 2 million dollars. So we'll be planning some average amount in there based on the last changes we see. We always look at that, that growing staffing that we had in the past. Lastly, we'll take operating cost changes into effect. We know this year we're going to have a water rate change, that's already been announced, we've got to take into the rate, yeah, the rate 40, 42, electric impact. That will be taken into account. And then we'll work very closely with fleet management for the cost and the commodity and the consumption of our fuel that runs the fleet. Other than that, on a, on a ongoing basis, when you look at the operating budget, around 50 million of our, just under 200 million of day-to-day operating expenses are for operating costs. Electric, water, gas, pencils, paper, toner, et cetera. So we can generally can bear a small, small percentage change in that 1% kind of category on overall operational changes, those are fairly normal. Of course, we'll look at our funding strategies, we'll make sure they're in alignment with the county's goals. So, you know, being financially strong, having a strong going economy, having a. have a professional, effective organization and a vibrant community. Make sure that we're looking at, as we make recommendations on that funding, either on the appropriation side or the revenue cycle, that we're making sure that we comply and are in alignment with those strategies. And then lastly, is next week on Thursday, correct? On Thursday, we'll be at 10:00 AM, so if you're tuned in. And if you're not, if you're not unable to attend, we will streaming live and we'll be recording the presentation. So the departments that have things going on and they're on the far east, upper valley, lower valley, they can tune in and log in. We'll be streaming live and doing the departmental budget kickoff and providing the instructions to the court, excuse me, to the departments from the county. That, that just leaves us into a closing of the presentation on the, opening up for any questions you may have, comments you'd like to make, or any feedback you'd like to provide us with, areas you want to make sure that we touch base on going forward. Of course, our, my goal will be to try and craft the budget that maintains the current tax rate. A pretty clear instruction I've had from the court over the last few years. And I'll strive to make recommendations that are in alignment with having a strong financial position. As Mr. Dion mentioned, there'll be, there may be times and that it's healthy for us to dip into that reserve position. And you know, maybe we end up closer to the 10% than we do the 15%, but in mind that we want to keep managing that in that 10 to 15% range. So, opening up for questions.
I mean, I thank the auditorium budget for continuing to, and administration to improve the process. I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's the most important time of the year for us as policymakers and just trying to streamline things and collaborate, you know, making sure the revenues line up as much as possible and trying to forecast. And I know it's a very cumbersome on your all staff to, I guess, meet these timelines, but it really does help us to make better policies and help us to make more informed decisions. So we really do appreciate the efforts on everybody's behalf to make these timeframes.
I agree, I was meeting with UMC on Wednesday and they were really excited to hear that we were looking at an August 27th date to pass the budget, which helps them, and I'm sure it'll help the ESDs as well and all the entities that we work with and come in to talk to us. So I appreciate all the effort and to have to get an easier budget process for everybody.
Also, the court, having this discussion with you all today and the work that our teams are doing, the same kind of feedback like JPD, I think it avoids a lot of problems if we can tell them in advance what we're looking at, what we're doing versus them going off and doing their, their thing and then us saying, oh wait, that's not what we wanted us to do. And you know, it's, it's like you create a plan and then we give directions on what to put in the plan and after the plan's been created. So all of this work that our departments are doing, doing in advance, being prepared, and I've seen internally HR, budget, auditors, meeting and preparing in advance, all of this and going through and setting up, while you see this calendar, they've created a much more behind-the-scenes, date-driven things that they have to have done. I'm just, what I, I, I'm, I'm always so pleased with the amount of progress that they're making on, on procedures.
And really thanks to the collaborative approach, I think more than ever, we're gonna need it this year and thank you for that.
It's a team, it's a team effort, it's always going to happen, it's everybody working together.
So, thank you.
And if there's, I guess one thing, I mean, if there could be, I guess, and I know that there typically is, you know, I think now that, you know, this court has worked together now for several years, you know, it might be helpful if we could look at the cumulative results of our decision-making. You know, I mean, you know, when, when we talk about that expenses have exceeded revenues, there's a pretty big delta there, whether it's 14, whether it's 14% increase or an increase in the expenses, but we're only increasing revenues by less than 3% or 4%. We need to know that, I mean, we need to know the results of our decision-making. Perhaps going back five years, you know, if expensive has, expenses overall have increased, I don't know, X percentage and revenues have increased that percentage. You know, that, that could be the will of the court, but we just need to know what the trade-off is. You know, is that going to result in a lower fund balance? Are we going to then agree to a 10% fund balance threshold versus a 15% fund balance threshold? Or are we going to then start engaging in, you know, looking at the reality of a tax increase, continuing that trend? Or are we going to look for, you know, perhaps a more balanced budget where expenditures, you know, expenditures don't exceed revenues by, by a certain percentage? But I think it would be helpful if we can get, you know, since we've been working together and we, we have a good idea of, you know, working on several budgets now together as a court, perhaps the cumulative impact of sort of, and perhaps maybe the court would entertain the idea of passing some sort of resolution that would guide what it is we seek to do, whether it is we seek to have more of a balanced budget where the revenues and the expenditures are closely aligned or, you know, we're willing to dip into fund balances to meet increased expenditures or whether we want to raise revenues and that'll perhaps, if we can have some sort of resolution at the beginning of, that might help us in our decision-making process as we go through each department.
And Commissioner, if I can add to what you just said, that we identify where those increases, you know, pinpoint where those increases come from.
Let me just qualify one thing, I said the year ended with revenues at 2.65%. The historical trend over the five years, and I think represented through budgets letter, was close to 5%. But we're seeing a decline, so we just, I'm just, just throwing a word caution out there, that's all. They do go up and down and sales tax is still up compared to the prior year, hotel motel is down.
Right.
But it's, it's an aberration, you know, people coming and going to this community and ready hotels, dairies. We have a big decrease one month and it's a whopper increase the next, so.
But the forecasting is certainly helpful.
But you need those trends, I agree.
Yeah, but I guess it's safe to say that, I mean, our revenues have not kept up with our expenditures by far.
And at some point, you know, I know we're trying to be progressive here. We, we barely got introduced to a new, a new module which we haven't, we haven't put out yet. It's called Pulse. And what I'm hopeful of is that we can set that up where you all can have it on your desktop where you can see trends and things that you want to see on a regular basis where they're there and they're updated live. You know, where you can see the revenue trends and some other stuff. So I'm hopeful that we can set something up later on where it's more of a management tool for you all to be on top of things. And that way, if you have questions, you'll have the information right then and there. But we're still a ways away, but we'll get there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item four, are we deleting?
Yes, can we please have a motion to move item four?
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Staudt?
Aye.
Commissioner Haggerty?
Aye.
Judge Vogel?
Aye.
Motion carries. And this brings us to item number three. Receive a presentation from the Public Works Department on the Internal Capital Asset Management Plan.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioner, Storma Palastus, Public Works Department. And this morning, I'm joined by Bernie Hernandez, he's our senior engineer. And we're going to present on the county asset management program that we have been working on for the last, I want to say for about a year.
When's the last time that we did something like this?
I, I honestly don't know if we've ever done anything like this.
No, not what we know of.
And, and it's been a little over a year they've been working on it. And it, just having this inventory of information that she's going to present is really valuable. And it's part of us being able to track performance from this point forward. So I'll let Norm, I don't, I won't steal her thunder.
No, we have a lot of data to present this morning. So if you have any questions, please stop me and we can address those at that time. Bernie was the leader on this project, he's got a lot of information on the technical aspects of what we're going to present. So please feel free to stop us and ask anything that you might need additional information on. So there are numerous types of assets that are under the county's care and possession. Assets can be either linear, which includes our roads. They can be individual or physical and that, an example of that would be our bridges. Metaphorical, and that's staff, so that was not included as part of this. And then we have the, I'm sorry, I'm afraid you can pronounce that for me. But that's really a combination of two or more items to form one. An example of that would be our water system, which includes pumps, tanks, and the water system itself. So for the purpose of this study, a county asset was defined as an item that the county has under its possession that exceeds a value of $5,000 to rehabilitate or replace. Items such as furniture, computers, vehicles were not included as part of the study. The county's assets are divided into 10 categories. We have land, we have the airport, buildings, parks and recreations, we have the water systems, we have stormwater collection systems, we have floodways, dam, berm, berms, water crossings. And as you can see on this, on this slide, roadways are the largest amount or the largest category that we have as part of our assets. The county has a total of over, about, has a total of 6,120 recorded roadways within the unincorporated areas of the county. 12, over 1,200 of those roadways are maintained by the road and bridge staff. That's the equivalent, or I guess we can say 578 centerline miles or the equivalent of 1,168 lane miles. Under those roadways, we have several categories. We have Class A and we have three of those roadways considered under Class A. An example of that would be Venta en la Unión, Fabens Carlos that, the road that leads to Fabens, I mean, to the Cabo Mans, I'm sorry. And then we also have the Aguilera International that leads to the Torneo Port of Entry. Then we have Class B, we have 29 of those roadways, they're minor collectors. An example of that is Pelicano, Eastlake, Westside Road. Then we, under Class C roadways, we have over 1,200 of those. And those are just your smaller roads, community roads. Now, an additional 4,800, approximately 4,800 of the roadways are what we considered not actively maintained roads. Never been accepted by our county or to our county road network and they're unimproved by development. What that means is that basically we've never done any work with them. And that is a lot of the roads that we see in dormant subdivisions. Also, like in the Waco Tanks where we have very low population density, those are the ones that make up those, 4,800.
And when do, at what point do we consider making them to accept those roadways into our network?
What we've started to do, and is even if we have one home, we're going to do some type of maintenance on the road. So we've done, recently, we've added a lot, I would say about 18 miles. And that's a significant increase because we started working and doing maintenance on the Hill Crest Estates. We've also done maintenance on the desert acceptance. And so this is new to the public works. If we have a home, we are going to do something.
And the other area is it's basically when there is a development, when there's some form of development normally is how they become a dedicated county roadway.
If, if there's development, they go through the entire process, the developer is responsible for developing those roads. And after a year of warranty, the county accepts them into our, to our road system.
And does that, are those, of the 4,800, are those all paved or is it also dirt roads as well?
No, of the 4,800, it was the basic maintenance, maybe base course, but that's, that's it.
Yeah, these are mostly dirt roads that have been cut by developers but never actually improved. So there is a basic infrastructure that doesn't follow the plats or anything because they're carved out and I guess way before they, they were looking just for the selling of the property.
In this slide, we depict the percentage of road miles maintained per warehouse. If you'll notice, the majority are maintained by our staff at the Fabens warehouse, 61%. And we currently have 28 employees in that warehouse. Then we have the Canutillo, which is 14%, we have 11 employees in that warehouse. And then in the Montana, which is the second highest, the 25%, we currently have 14 employees allocated to that. One of the things that when we talk to some of the constituents out there that they asking for additional services, when we mention the amount of employees, they are really surprised that we don't have more. And so, you know, at that point, they understand why some of it is not being handled. And so I'm planning on bringing a request for additional staff during budget hearings.
Norma, I think I've asked this before, I just want to be sure I understand it myself. Out of all the paving and grading that we do, do we contract some of that out where it's more cost-effective for the county?
We do contract the overlay type of paving.
The overlay you're talking, that means the.
It's a type of paving, it's a type of paving that we do.
Is it asphalt?
Because it's asphalt.
Basically asphalt, it's a two-inch mat that gets laid onto an existing surface, which is, you know, typically we'll do, what we do is the type of pavement, which is a double chip seal or a single chip seal. And this is the foundation of it and then we'll come back in with the H-Mac overlay, which is an actual two-inch, two-inch thick, hottest one.
And not really knowing the business, it would seem to me that if we contract a lot of the work out, we don't have to invest in capital equipment, personnel, retirements.
And we looked at that last year, Commissioner, we did do a study on that and we found that it was still better for the county to do the single penetration and double penetration. There was a significant savings in us continuing to do that.
Now, it is something we could look at as we look at requesting personnel. We could look at the cost of adding personnel versus contracting more of that work out. But when they did the analysis, we shared it with the court last year, but the, but the cost, I think we broke it down to almost, I think it was like a cost per mile or.
Square yard.
Per square yard. And it was cheaper to do those two, so there's three processes we do every year. We do some roads with single seal, some roads with double seal, some roads we do overlay, the asphalt paving that Mr., that Bernie was explaining. But the, the overlay, we contract out, it's, it's our, I think for capacity to do it and the cost, we have contracted that out and continue to contract that out. But the other two, our analysis showed to still, it's still cost-effective to do it in-house.
So what we've done for this study is we have prepared a rating system anywhere from A through F, A being the best and F pretty much paving. What we've also included is to provide a service, a level of service for each of the roads. And through the presentation and all our assets, we've done the same thing. So I'll go over the first one. The Public Works Department, we strive to provide a level of service for each of the roads that provides continuous transportation routes to all regions of the county, maintains a minimum of a D service level along roadway traffic. Road surface shall be maintained at a great rating of D or better. And additionally is provides adequate signage and signal, signalization. All roads shall have a driving surface and no dirt roads will be accepted. So like I mentioned, right below that, we addressed the paved roads and we addressed the gravel roads and the rating system that we use for each of these. So here in this slide, we have the roadway network and the rating as it currently exists. We have identified the type of roads, we have the type of paving used for the roads and also the average rating per area location. Please keep in mind that for the most part, even though we do have some roads that are not in such good condition, for the most part, we're averaging a C, a C grade for our roads. With the exception of Montana Vista, and that was, got an average rating of D. With the exception of Montana Vista, and that was, got an average rating of D. But if you notice on that one also, Montana, the number of gravel roads is higher, the percentage is higher. So that's why it gets the D rating.
I thought that all the roads we were talking about were paved, but I guess some of them are not.
Oh, no, no, so?
Dirt roads, and then we have the gravel roads.
Okay, okay.
That's, it always confuses me when we talk about paving. We talk about our upcoming paving season.
Well, paving is gravel.
Because paving is a lot gravel.
It's a pay for our dirt road to be paved.
So we don't have dirt roads, but we have the gravel roads. Now, the county waterway crossings, we have two hundred and sixty-six waterway crossings within the unincorporated areas of the county. We have twenty bridges, we have thirteen major culverts, ninety-five minor pipe crossings, and a hundred thirty-eight low-water crossings. This slide is similar to what I had discussed about us giving, providing the court the level of service that we provide for the water crossings and also the ratings. And the table right below this slide shows our ratings as they currently exist. And going back to what I had mentioned before, none of our assets are failing. While some of these are in poor condition because they do have a D rating, I do want to point out that we are not failing. Now, we have one dam that's inspected by TCQ every two years. And then we have six minor berms that are county maintained. And Ferny is going to explain the difference.
And basically, the difference between the dam and the berms is a dam, when it's constructed, it's built with a clay core, and this is to ensure that there is no fatigue or any failure on the berm. Versus where a regular berm, you just do regular fill material, and it's subject to be being repaired at any time. You'll have more, more wear and tear on a berm than you will on a dam. But additionally, it's a lot easier to correct the berm than it is to actually redo the core surface, the core of the dam.
But something to consider also that a dam is twice as much, twice as expensive as a berm would be. So in this slide, slide, we also have our ratings of our dam and berms. And the Fabens Dam is rated at B, which is pretty good. It's in need of minor repairs, but as a whole, it's in very good condition. The rest of our berms are classified as C. They are deteriorating and might need multiple repairs throughout. But overall, they're in good condition. The county has ten channelized floodways that are maintained within the road and county right-ofaways. So, we can go to the next slide so that we can show. In the next slide, we have our ratings. And these overall have a B rating, an average, it's a B rating. We have two of them that are in need of more repairs, which would be the one in Los Mochis, in Canutillo, and then we have the Sparks Arroyo. The Mochis is the one where, in the past, we've seen some flooding issues. So all the debris and flooding comes down to the Los Mochis Channel, and that's where everything is handled. And so we see a lot of more, I guess, use of that. And so I, that's, that's what gives us a C rating on that. Then we have the county stormwater collection systems. The county collection systems. We have limited stormwater collection systems, but these are responsible for the maintenance of the following, which are forty underground retention ponds, twenty-three retention detentions ponds, and six conveying or floodways with no termination. And overall, these are in very good condition, they're rated at B. Our next asset is the East Montana Water System. The East Montana Water System is composed of three, three systems, and they're all located within the unincorporated areas. The largest one being the East Montana Sound. In our ratings, as you can see, the Mayfair, Schuman, Colonial Revolución have a rating of A, and that's because those are the newest systems. But overall, the rating is, for the three systems, is at a B. Then we have our county parks. We are responsible for the maintenance of twelve county parks. We don't own the twelve of them, we only own ten, but we did include the River Trail because we are responsible for the maintenance of the River Trail. We have also included the Veterans Park because we are responsible for the pool that's within the Veterans Park. So in this slide, we have listed all of the parks and the rating. The only one that would change would be the Aguadusa because we've done significant renovations. So that one should change, it's not rated, should not be rated at a C. We are rating it more at an A, B. And in this slide, we show everything that's available. There's no defining uniformity between the parks. The parks can be generalized by their end usage, and so we have identified the parks and their usage. Then we have county-owned buildings, facilities by classification. So we have sixty-nine buildings that the county is responsible and owns. We have twenty-four parks classified as parks and recreation. We have three as historical, fourteen specialized, and those include the Sheriff's Department. Then we have two parking, and we're only considering the parking garages in those. And then we have three temporary buildings, used for construction and staging purposes. Then we have the twenty-three administration buildings that provide services for the community and house staging facilities for county services. I have a correction in this slide, as we rate these facilities. On the third column, I'm sorry, the fourth column, in number of buildings, that should be a number of C buildings or lower. And then the next column should be number of buildings F or lower. And so for the most part, the F or the ones that are failing are, we have one administration building, we have three parks and recreation, and one of the historical buildings.
Does the historical building have a real cure?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Which we're in the midst, we already have funding moving back up.
That was another question I had.
All of them were, are being addressed. We know where we're failing, and so all of the, the five buildings that we have identified are being addressed at this time. Under land parcels, we have two hundred and thirty-four parcels, which is the equivalent of two thousand two hundred eighty-three acres. And this land is recognized, this land belonging to the county. As you'll notice, here, for example, in the airport, we have eighteen percent. Eighteen percent of land is used for the Fabens Airport. We also have over eighteen hundred parcels of land that are recognized, that recognize the county as the trustee for those parcels.
What does that mean, in terms of us being the trustee? Like, what, what can we do with that land moving forward?
Prove to sell it and then divide it up into stakeholders or stakeholders.
And we worked with Commissioner Hagerty on a couple of these, to see, like, what, if anything, you know, and I've, it's one thing I've also talked to the other county administrators about, like, what do you do? It's just, we, with our, with our unincorporated areas, we have some of the biggest, I think, issues with this. It's, it's not an easy?
The issue is all the five cent lots in the middle, nowhere where people die, nobody has anything to do with them. And what we've talked about in the past, and something I talked to the lobbyists about, is trying to create, what Houston's, what the county's doing, is creating basically a trust kind of thing, that where it kind of tries to create markets and land they can sell and actually have something to develop it. Because right now, you've got a one-acre parcel in the middle of a thousand acres of parcels, and with no land, no water, no, no roads, no water, so it's just a mess.
You know, we tried to address it legislatively, and something we look at this year too, and collaborating with Horizon Economic?
And something that's also working, I'm trying to solve as well.
Yeah, I think we've had conversations with the Horizon Economic Development Corporation to see if they can be a part of creating something, probably for the east side, but?
The other thing about it, it's very encumbersome, even to find, and I think Signe can speak to this, like, even trying to get right-ofaways and, uh, but, because I've even talked about, or I've even talked to Ramon about, could we start with the list of the biggest lots? And start calling the neighboring, or sending a letter to the neighboring landowners? Just to say, hey, that we have this parcel, and I mean, we contract this with Linebarger, I think, to do this for us? But I don't know how, like, like, much time and effort is spent, you know, like, call the neighboring landowners or send out a letter saying, would you be interested in buying it? You know, because no matter what they buy it for, it's going to be better for it to be back on the tax rolls. But anyways, I just?
You need a nickel back.
We what? Yeah. We need our nickel back, right? But it's not cost?
I paid taxes this year for a six cents on my mortgage.
Yeah, I, I've looked through some of them. I mean, like, some of the higher dollar ones, we get eight dollars in taxes, that's a high dollar.
Just to make sure I don't owe the county any money, so I make that six cent check.
So under the land parcels, we have this table where it identifies the, the category, the acres, and the condition, because they really vary in the type of condition. We've actually listed it individually and made some comments on it. Under further investigation, if you notice, we have two hundred eighty-six acres. And that needs to be investigated because sometimes it lists as county property, not necessarily as a trustee, but we have no record that it belongs to the county. So that's something that we're looking at also. And last is our Fabens Airport. Our Fabens Airport facility encompasses over four hundred acres. It's county-owned, federally licensed, and classified as a general aviation airport. The facility operates a sixty percent local general aviation and forty percent transit, general aviation. It has a single access point and landlocked on all the other sites.
Norma, is that probably an old photo?
It is, sir.
Because there's a, a lot of residents that have built up.
Around the area?
Excuse me. Right by the runway.
Yes, and it might have been a photo that he just pulled from our files to include it here.
Okay, thank you.
So the rating, the average rating for the airport, we obtained it was a D. But we're not failing, we're making a lot of improvements. We know of the needs, and we're working towards them through grants, or mainly through grants. It is rated at a D, currently.
And Norma, can I, can I ask you something about that?
Yes, yes, sir.
You, you say we're making a lot of improvements. What are those improvements that were currently?
Okay, our improvements right now, we're working on the facility itself, and we've applied for grants so that we can do enhancements to the runways, security, lighting, and so all those would be part of the current improvements that we've applied for grants to do.
Another, another project that is very preliminary, but we are working on, is, as Norma mentioned in the previous slide, it has one point of access. And as I think you and Commissioner Pettis are aware, we've been trying to secure that one, the one road into our airport, is, we have an easement, it's not our road. And so, one thing that Norma has been working on, we reached out to the UT? UT lands to try to get them to actually deed us that, that right-ofway, so we could own that road and have for sure secure access to the airport. We weren't able to do that, or there was an indication that they would never do that for us.
So we're looking at another option, another road that's on the site. It's preliminary, but that's what we're looking for.
And we're including the other owners that?
Definitely.
It will involve, it will involve working with those, that other, the, the landowners to get that access.
So actually, what we're doing now, as far as the runway, the lighting, we've done nothing. What we are working on is the office structure itself, and, and I've seen some improvements in the hangar, but that is for UTEP.
We were committed to getting bathrooms, and that's pretty much finalized. I would say ninety-eight percent, we're waiting on some stalls for the division of the bathrooms themselves. We're now working in the administrative office. We've redone, we're redoing the entire building, entire building.
The entire portion of the building that we operate on.
It would probably also even include the, so that we'll get a brand-new building.
I was out there a couple of weeks ago, and there's some other issues, but I'll bring them up separately.
One of the other things that we're also doing is, you know, we were supposed to put a parking facility for Tech, I'm sorry, for UTEP. But while we're out there, we went ahead and created a separate for our, our facility use as well. So we're creating a brand-new roadway and a new parking lot.
That's in the plans, is that correct?
Well, they're, they're actually built, we're just waiting for the temperature to warm up. So if you go out there and pay.
And just a few other things that I'd like to mention is, I did include, we didn't include as part of the presentation, because individually, the street signs don't amount to more than five thousand dollars, but other assets would be, for example, street sign names. We have over twenty-four hundred of those, regulation signs, over forty-four hundred of those, street lights, seven, one thousand seven hundred eighty. And then we have signalization lights. We have seven intersections, and we have twenty-six of those. Just wanted to share that information. And I think it's important that I mention that signalization lights are new out in the county. We have not had that many, we had two for many years. But I want to bring it up because I think as we go from rural to urban, we're going to need to have more of those, and those are very expensive, anywhere from two hundred thousand to two hundred fifty thousand dollars. So something to consider.
And I apologize, Norma, one more thing. The address that was assigned to the airport, which I think is fourteen sixty-one Fabens, is the incorrect address, and they're having all sorts of problems getting the electricity in there. So you might go back and, and look at that, but, you know, it might be the correct address, but I've been told that it is not.
What happened with the addresses, because they wanted to separate the facilities, they wanted us to give an A or B indication for each of the addresses. And we cannot do that. We can only give one address, and then what's happened is that the electric company will give an A or front or back in addition to the address, and so that was a problem there. But we, I, I thought that it had been corrected, I will go back and make sure that it has been addressed.
Yeah, just, and we, you might be right with what you're telling, but that came to me, that they're having all sorts of problems getting certain services installed.
And I will go back and check, make sure that it has been corrected.
And I want to just mention about the importance of this plan, and, you know, I, I'm often asking Norma, like, well, what's, what's our plan? Where, you know, what are we going to tackle? What's going to be our method of tackling some of these problems? And realistically, you can't, you can't develop that method if you don't even know what you have. And this is such a major accomplishment. I mean, I remember Ferny coming to me a year ago to talk about, like, what, what space we had, what our buildings were. So it's been a major work in progress for, for the department and for Ferny for the past year. And I just really appreciate the, the work they've put into gathering this information. So we have something to start from, and, and we'll have goals to improve our ratings. And, and know also to be able to give advice? And and know also to be able to give advice and recommendation to the Commissioners Court on why investments needed in certain areas and and what what we'll see from that investment. So I just thank you all so much.
Also, having done this project has allowed us to actually get involved in other areas that we were not aware needed to be addressed. Because like I mentioned, some of the buildings that we had deficiencies, we saw that and we move forward to addressing those issues.
Well, I appreciate the time that you've taken on this too. It does give the court more information and guidance on what needs to be done. But it's also going to be nice to see the investments that were already approved by the court coming to fruition and seeing some of those numbers move up a little bit or the the letter grading go up a little bit, so.
I know we have another meeting in the house, so. But thank you very much for the, I mean, I want to definitely agree with what Betsy said about the the importance and the value of the study. Just very quickly, as it pertains to roads, what what was the methodology used to 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 achieve that grading system? Because I know the city had a similar issue when they did their comprehensive road assessments. They had a grading system, I think very similar, A through F. And then there was some dispute of, you know, that it didn't take into consideration volume and things like that where other roads were deteriorating at a faster rate than other roads. So was this based on, I mean, were were each of the roads tested? Or were they were they driven on or was it just based on historical data? What was that?
It was a combination of both, I guess. Mostly it was tracking down of how many times you have to go out there and fix potholes or anything according to that one. And then in addition to that, we did a physical view. So as you're driving now, then you could see if the road is deteriorating based on a certain percentage. And so what we set out, we're saying is that for every mile of roadway, if we have more than three patches within that first mile, which are bigger than 10-foot patch, then it it counts as a multiple patch road. If we only have within that first mile, we only have one patch that's smaller than 10 feet, you know, as as a pothole or something, then that brought it into a different category. And so it kind of, it was a very complicated method. And we kind of had to tweak with the numbers a little bit, but it was, I guess, something that we're going to refine. And we're kind of bringing putting forward as far as for our pavement program going into the future of how we're going to assess that rating. I know this is a quick little overview from A to F. But when you look at the the sheet that I was working on, you know, it has working down into amounts of cracks per per section or versus, you know, bad shoulders versus good shoulders. And so it was a very tedious, complicated method that we kind of broke through. And I know that there's, I guess, because when we called around to find out what other counties utilize to break their, to get their rating, most of them are going through this, which is the CBR method, which is basically a little device that you pull around behind a truck and it measures your wear and tear on your on your roadway, how many bumps you have per linear miles and stuff. And so it's very complicated. But if we don't have that equipment, we started breaking down some of the similar components based on visual inspections and previous records about their fur care agency.
And then also very, thank you for that. And also very quickly, as it pertains to the stormwater infrastructure, does this in any way mesh with the Stormwater Master Plan of 2010? Or was it just basically an assessment of what we already have? Or was there any sort of looking into? I guess this being just kind of an assessment of our inventory, it didn't really look at to kind of the.
It did focus on some of that, but it did focus on the repairs intended. So basically, it was just a breakdown of what we have. We did cross-reference some of the, like the low water crossings and how they reflect with FEMA and some of the needs that they have. But because of the low water crossings, a large, a large amount of the ones that are referenced in the 2010 study lie outside county right of way. Then there is not much that the county can utilize because we can't go outside of our right of way. So the most of the focus was within the county system that is owned by the county and physically maintained within the county property.
But the part of also having, again, this master plan. So this is identifying what we have. It's also part of that piece. I've heard from the court before, you know, I'm going to use parks. Every time we've talked about parks, we've talked about, we know what we have, but we looked at what we don't have, what we're missing or where are we? Is there dense areas with no access to park? So part of having this plan and and the ratings tells us what we need. It's also, it doesn't tell us what we need, but it helps us go identify with what our future needs are.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much for all that work.
Thank you.
Thanks for making all the progress first.
Yeah.
This concludes today's meeting at 12:35 PM.